I am starting in the name of Allah, Most Merciful. Allah Almighty says in chapter 3 verse number 185, "Every soul will taste death and you will receive your full reward on the day of judgment." Thus, one who is saved from the hellfire and admitted to the paradise, indeed he is successful. Remember, this worldly life is but a deceiving enjoyment. You will be tested through your wealth and your life. Allah Almighty says in chapter 87 verse 14 to 19, "Successful indeed are those who purify themselves, remember the name of their God and pray. But unfortunately you prefer the life of this world only, even though the hereafter is far better and more lasting." This is certainly mentioned in earlier scripture, the scripture of Abraham and Moses. In chapter 3 verse 64, Allah Almighty says, "O Prophet Muhammad, say, 'O people of the book, let us come to a common terms that we will worship none but Allah; associate none with him, nor take one another as lords instead of Allah; but if still they turn away, then say, 'Be a witness that we have submitted to Almighty Allah.'" We pray, may Allah gain and grant success for all of us here and hereafter. Thank you so much.
The chair thanks the gentleman for his invocation. Counsel will be at ease.
Thank you, yes. Not much time here.
The next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, June the twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Baz.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, June sixth, two thousand twenty-four, be approved.
It has been moved and property seconded that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, June the sixth, two thousand twenty-four, stand approved. All those in favor, the motion will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the Journal is approved. The next order of business is requests of leave of absence, and the Chair recognizes Councilmember Kathy Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, there are no requests for leave of absence today.
The Chair thanks the Councilmember. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Brooks.
Good morning, Council President. On behalf of the minority, there are no requests for leave of absence today.
The Chair thanks the Councilmember. The Chair now recognizes Councilmember Kathy Gilmore Richardson for a motion concerning certain legislative matters that may arise during the course of today's session of council and that were not listed on the calendar circulated prior to today's session.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that any of the following matters, if considered today, may be added to the agenda for this session of council and, as required by law, subsequently published on an amended agenda after the consideration of those matters: Resolutions authorizing hearings, amendments to bills on first reading, the reconsideration of a bill vetoed by or recalled from the mayor, amendments to bills recalled from the mayor, resolutions taking substantive action to be voted on in this session, a motion to withdraw a bill or resolution that is not on the calendar, and a motion placing a bill or resolution on or returning a bill or resolution from the suspension calendar that is not listed on today's calendar. The purpose of this motion is to provide the public with notice concerning possible actions by council that arose too late to be included on the calendar that was published prior to today's session.
It has been moved and property seconded that the legislative matters stated by Councilmember Gilmore Richardson may be added to the agenda for today should those matters arise during the course of this session of council. All those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the motion carries. The Chair will dispense with the regular order of business to recognize the guests and visitors joining us in the chambers this morning. On behalf of all members of City Council, we welcome you to our council session. We appreciate your taking the time to join us as we attend to the legislative affairs of our city. We certainly invite you to come again. As there are no presentations today, the next order of business is communications. The Chair requests that the Sergeant-at-Arms deliver the messages from the mayor to the Chief Clerk. Will the Chief Clerk please read the messages from the mayor and any other communications in her possession?
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, I am transmitting for the consideration of your honorable body a resolution approving the reappointment of Reverend Bonnie Camarda as a member of the Board of Commissioners of the Philadelphia Housing Authority, and a resolution approving the appointment of Erin Dwyer as a member of the Board of Commissioners of the Philadelphia Housing Authority. And pursuant to sections four dash six oh four and two dash three oh seven of the Home Rule Charter, I am today transmitting to the Council the recommendation of the City Plan and Commission on the following bills: two four zero one eight one and two four zero one eight two. And pursuant to sections four dash six oh four and two dash three oh seven of the Home Rule Charter, I am today transmitting to the Council the recommendation of the City Plan Commission on the following bills: Bill number two four zero three three six, not for approval; two four zero three eight two; two four zero four one five; two four zero four two one, approval with amendments; two four zero four two three; two four zero four two five; two four zero four two six; two four zero four two seven, forty-five day hold; two four zero four three one; two four zero four three two; two four zero four three five; two four zero four seven three, approval with amendments; two four zero four nine three; two four zero four nine five; two four zero four nine six; two four zero four nine seven; and two four zero four nine nine. And I am pleased to advise you that on June twelfth, two thousand twenty-four, I sign the following bills, which were passed by Council at its session on May thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four: Bill number two four zero 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 five; two four zero one eight seven; two four zero two two zero dash A; two four zero two four one; two four zero two four five; two four zero three oh three; two four zero three eight three; two four zero four two three; two four zero four two five; two four zero four three one; and two four zero four three five. Council President, there are no other communications in my possession.
Thank you very much. The messages will be printed in the Journal. The next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Phillips.
Good morning, Philadelphia. Good morning, Council President Johnson and colleagues. I have no bills or resolutions for introduction today. God bless.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Kathy Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, I offer one non-privileged resolution and would like to be recognized after the Chief Clerk reads the resolution.
Will the Clerk please read the title of the non-privileged resolution?
A resolution authorizing the creation of a not-for-profit provider task force to review the city's contract and procurement processes with nonprofit providers and propose recommendations for improved business practices.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Kathy Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I humbly move and request that the rules of council be suspended as to permit consideration of this resolution on today's calendar.
It has been moved and property seconded that the rules of council be suspended to permit consideration of this resolution at today's session of council. All those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion passes. This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jamie Gardere.
Good morning, Council President. Today, I have four non-privileged resolutions and nine non-privileged resolutions on your behalf.
Will the Clerk please read the title of the resolutions?
A non-privileged resolution also naming the four thousand block of Baring Street at the intersection of North Preston Street, Yolanda Laney Basketball Way, to honor Yolanda Laney Esquire for her trailblazing in women's basketball and contributions to the next generation of women players.
This bill, this resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration in the next session of council.
And also naming the thirty-six hundred block of West Warren Street, Coach Lerline Jones U-City Way to honor Coach Lerline Jones and her long history of coaching and mentorship in the city of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for the consideration in our next session of council.
Also naming the sixty-two hundred block of West Pine Street, West Side Weekly Way to honor the West Side Weekly newspaper and its impact on West Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration in the next session of council.
And also naming the fourteen hundred block of South Fifty-Fifth Street between Springfield Avenue and Chester Avenue as Mont Brown Way to honor Mont Brown and his dedicated community service to southwest Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration in the next session of council.
And the resolutions on your behalf, Council President, approving the reappointment of Reverend Bonnie Camarda as a member of the Board of Commissioners of the Philadelphia Housing Authority.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
Does he have to make the motion first?
She has to make the motion.
And a non-privileged resolution appointing the appointment of Erin Dwyer as a board, as a member of the Board of Commissioners of the Philadelphia Housing Authority, and approving the appointment of Darrell Clark as a member of the Board of Commissioners of the Philadelphia Housing Authority. Just keep reading them. And approving the reappointment of Ethel Wise as a board, as a member of the Board of Commissioners of the Philadelphia Housing Authority, and approving the reappointment of Lynette M. Brownsoe as a member of the Board of Commissioners of the Philadelphia Housing Authority, and approving the reappointment of Ismail A. Shaheed as a member of the Board of Commissioners of the Philadelphia Housing Authority, and approving the reappointment of Herbert Wetzel as a member of the Board of Commissioners of the Philadelphia Housing Authority, and approving the reappointment of Asia Cony as a member of the Board of Commissioners of the Philadelphia Housing Authority, and approving the appointment of Sandra Dungy Glenn as a member of the Board of Commissioners of the Philadelphia Housing Authority.
The Chair again recognizes Councilmember Jamie Gardere for a motion concerning the resolutions just read.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit the consideration of the four non-privileged resolutions introduced on my behalf and the nine non-privileged resolutions introduced on your behalf that were just read into the record by the Chief Clerk at today's session of council.
It has been moved and property seconded. All those in favor, the motion will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries. The resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Isaiah Thomas.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Today, I have two resolutions, one on your behalf, Council President.
Will the Clerk please read the title of the resolutions?
A privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Education to hold hearings investing in the incidence rate, impacts, and outcomes of homeless students in the school district of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution introduced on your behalf calling on the Pennsylvania State Senate to enact House Bill twenty-three seventy to fairly fund schools in Philadelphia and across the Commonwealth to ensure fair allocation of resources for all students.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration in the next session of council. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two privileged and two non-privileged resolutions, and I'd like to be recognized after one.
Will the Clerk please read the title of the privileged and non-privileged resolutions?
And two bills, correct, Councilman?
And, oh, excuse me. Two privileged resolutions and two bills.
Will the Clerk please read the title of the bills and resolutions?
An ordinance amending section fourteen dash five hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Overlay Zoning Districts by amending section fourteen dash five two four entitled Fourth District Overlay District to add provisions related to affordable housing, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And an ordinance amending Title Nine of the Philadelphia Code entitled Regulation of Businesses, Trades, and Professions to add a chapter requiring individuals with responsibility for determination or evaluation of means and methods used during construction or demolition to provide notification to the city upon becoming aware of a violation or law or a substandard practice that presents a substantial threat of serious bodily injury or damage to property and making technical changes, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And a privileged resolution honoring Mashid Kuba and the Kuba Institute for their work organizing Kuba International Senegal, an initiative to enhance education in West Africa, further welcoming Senegalese Minister for Education Mustafa Jirasi to the United States.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution honoring and celebrating Anthony Glass for his outstanding work as a Legislative Director for the Office of Councilmember Curtis Jones Jr. and wishing him luck with his future endeavors at the University of Notre Dame Law School.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Rue Landau. Sorry, the Chair recognizes Councilmember Jones.
Yes, briefly, Mr. President, thank you. Joining us today are also his parents, Mr. and Mrs. Glass. We want to give them a round of applause for coming down. Please stand. We also want to recognize, we also want to recognize the hefty, hefty bill they will be paying. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. The Chair now recognizes, the Chair recognizes Councilmember O'Neil.
Yes, as Fox Chase residents, the Glass family, I'd be remiss if I didn't welcome them to City Council and tell them how impressed we are with the son they raised. And I think I speak for the whole council. That's an easy one for me. And good luck, Anthony.
Chair recognizes Councilman Rue Landau.
Good morning, Council President, colleagues, and guests. I have two privileged resolutions today.
Will the Clerk please read the title of the resolutions?
A privileged resolution authorizing Joint City Council Committees on Education and Children and Youth to hold hearings exploring the creation of a School District of Philadelphia Chief of Joy.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage joy calendar.
And a privileged resolution honoring and congratulating Philadelphia's James Beard Restaurant and Media Award winners, Vietnam Restaurant, Inquirer critic Craig Lebon and photographer Jessica Griffin, and authors David Soro, Gary Paul Nabon, and Danny Childs.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Lizada.
Thank you, Council President. Today, I offered two privileged resolutions.
Will the Clerk please read the title of the resolutions?
A privileged resolution honoring and recognizing the humanitarian efforts of the Puerto Rican community who rallied to protect family, friends, and the island of Puerto Rico during cataclysmic hurricanes, earthquakes, and any major disasters that strike.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing June twenty twenty-four as Children's Awareness Month in the city of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, I offer one bill and three privileged resolutions.
Will the Clerk please read the title of the bill and the resolutions, please?
An ordinance authorizing the installation, ownership, replacement, and maintenance of various encroachments in the vicinity of six fifteen North Broad Street, Philadelphia, PA one nine one two three, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And a privileged resolution recognizing the tenth through the thirteenth days of the Islamic month of Duhul Hijir as Eid al-Hadza in the city of Philadelphia during June twenty twenty-four.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And recognizing the month of August twenty twenty-four as Public Safety Awareness Month in the city of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing the week of June seventeenth through the June twenty-third as Sanitation Workers Week in the city of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Brooks.
Thank you, Council President. I have five privileged resolutions to introduce today.
Thank you. Will the Clerk please read the title of the privileged resolutions?
A privileged resolution commemorating and celebrating June nineteenth as Juneteenth, when final enforcement of the Emancipation Proclamation was ordered in Texas, marking the end of enslavement of Black and Brown people in the United States.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Joint City Council Committees on Education and Children and Youth to hold hearings on the prevalence of the usage of exclusionary school discipline and the use of collective punishment practices in public schools across Philadelphia, and on how these and other policies and practices perpetuate anti-blackness and anti-black racism and harm students academically, socially, emotionally, to the detriment of their health, well-being, and future life outcomes.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution honoring and celebrating Maurice Mitchell, a community organizer, social movement strategist, and national leader in the Movement for Black Lives and the National Director of the Working Families Party on the occasion of his visit to Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution declaring the month of July as Disability Pride Month in the city of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution honoring and celebrating the team creating the Autism Play Date for their work on autism awareness and inviting all to attend the Autism Play Date at Smith Memorial Park this August.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jim Harrod.
I have no bills or resolutions today, Council President.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Old Rort.
Thank you, Council President. I do have two privileged resolutions to introduce today.
Will the Clerk please read the title of the privileged resolutions?
Privileged resolution honoring and recognizing the labors of brotherly love, sisterly effectiveness, and sibling solidarity committed by aid workers who have crossed rivers and oceans and tiers to feed the hungry, to build shelter, to bring music, and to bring healing and warmth and compassion to those in the greatest need.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution honoring and celebrating Palestinian theologian and educator, Reverend Dr. Munder Isaac, the pastor of Evangelical Lutheran Christmas Church in Bethlehem and the Lutheran Church in Sahur, Dean of Bethlehem Bible College, Director of the Christ at the Checkpoint Conference, and Coordinator of Global Chiroz for Justice.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Old Rort.
Thank you, Council President. I simply want to- Simply want to say that we are honored to be joined today by the Reverend Dr. Munther Isak.
Could he stand, sir?
Say again.
Could he stand?
Yes, please. Dr. Munther, please stand. Week after week, we have heard testimony, family members, concerned citizens raising awareness about what's happening in the Middle East. We have here today, joined with us clergy who was in, as they say, the throes of all that's going on, literally pastoring a church in the place where Jesus was born and is known for his work and his preaching that reminded us that if you're asking where God is in the midst of all this, God is under the rubble. So, we're thankful to have Dr. Isak here with us today, and I'm honored to honor him today as well.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The chair recognizes Councilmember Driscoll.
Good morning, Mr. President. No bills or resolutions today.
Chair recognizes Councilmember O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. No bills or resolutions.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Squiller.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer two bills.
Will the clerk please read the title of the bills?
An ordinance amending Chapter 12-1100 Miscellaneous Regulations and Penalties and Chapter 12-2800 Administrative Adjudication of Parking Violations of the Philadelphia Code Making Revisions to Disability Parking Space Standards and Procedures Creating an Application Process for Residential Disability Parking Spaces Limited for Use by a Specific Person with Disability Creating New Administrative Hearing Process and Amending Applicable Penalties.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a bill continuing the Fishtown Kensington Area Business Improvement District in the area that generally includes both sides of Frankfurt Avenue, from the west side of Delaware Avenue to the southwest side of Lehigh Avenue, both sides of North Front Street, from the north side of Poplar Street to the south side of Diamond Street, both sides of East Gerard Avenue from Frankfurt Avenue continuing to the west side of East Burke Street, the north side of West Gerard Avenue from Frankfurt Avenue to North Second Street, the south side of West Gerard Avenue from Frankfurt Avenue to Howard Street, and certain blocks of streets that intersect portions of these streets, approving an extension of the boundaries of the district to include North Front Street from Montgomery Street to Diamond Street, East Gerard Avenue from East Fletcher Street to East Burke Street, and the north side of West Gerard Avenue from Front Street to North Second Street, continuing the Fishtown Kensington Area Business Improvement District, a Pennsylvania nonprofit corporation as the Neighborhood Improvement District Management Association for the district, approving a plan for and report concerning the district, authorizing the Director of Commerce on behalf of the city to execute an agreement with the Fishtown Kensington Area Business Improvement District relating to the district and reauthorizing the Fishtown Kensington Area Business Improvement District to assess property owners within the district, a special property assessment fee to be used in accordance with the approved plan, all in accordance with the provisions of the Community and Economic Improvement Act under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee. The chair recognizes Councilmember Cindy Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer three privileged resolutions, one on your behalf.
Will the clerk please read the title of the resolutions?
A privileged resolution calling upon local, state, and federal law enforcement, as well as the United States Department of Agriculture and Department of Human Services, to investigate and prevent supplemental nutrition assistance program SNAP fraud for those in the city of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a resolution recognizing and commending the Save the Train Coalition for the preservation of Philadelphia's SEPTA services in the community's time of need.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution on your behalf honoring and recognizing the Black Clergy of Philadelphia and Vicinity for being a pillar of strength and symbol of hope for Philadelphia through its social justice activism.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The chair recognizes Councilmember Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm honored to offer this resolution on your behalf, and I just really wanted to recognize Bishop Lewis, the president, Bishop Lewis Felton, if he is here.
Can the members of the Black Clergy please stand?
The Black Clergy, Philadelphia Black Clergy. And so, Bishop Felton has long been a pillar, and the Black Clergy has been a pillar of strength in our community, always a guiding light when things seem at their darkest in the city of Philadelphia. And so, I just really wanted to recognize him and thank them for the work they do. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilmember Nina Maad.
Thank you, Council President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
As there are no reports from committee today, we will now go to the consideration of bills on our calendar. Will the clerk please read Bill Number 240242?
Bill Number 240242 on first reading is an ordinance amending Section 14-500 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Overlay Zoning Districts by amending Section 14-524 entitled FDO Fourth District Overlay District to establish use regulations on medical facilities all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be placed in the second reading and final passage calendar for our next session of council. As there are no additional bills on the first reading calendar, the chair recognizes Councilmember Kathy Gilmore Richardson for a motion concerning the resolutions on the final passage calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended as to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the following resolutions on the final passage calendar. Numbers 240168, 240487, 240535, 240536, 240537, 240538, 240539, 240540, 240541, 240552, 240584, 240585, 240586, 240589, 240594, 240595, and 240602.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved in property seconded that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the resolutions just read by Councilmember Gilmore Richardson. All those in favor will indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries, we will consider the resolution, the resolution consent agenda shortly. The chair again recognizes Councilmember Gilmore Richardson for a motion concerning the bills on the second reading and final passage calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended as to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the following bills on the second reading and final passage calendars. Numbers 240332, 240385, 240415, 240421, 240426, 240305, 240380, 240382, 240384, 240418, 240419, 240420, 240424, 240469, 240473, 240475, 240493, 240495, 240496, 240497, 240414, 240468, 240474, 240476, 240498, 240429, and 240433. The following bills on the calendar are being held, 240368.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved in property seconded that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the bills just read by Councilmember Gilmore Richardson. All those in favor will indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will consider the bills on consent agenda shortly. The chair recognizes Councilmember Gilmore Richardson for the purpose of calling up any additional bills and resolutions on the regular second reading and final passage calendar.
Thank you again, Mr. President. In addition to the bills and resolutions being considered on the consent agenda, the following bills and resolutions are on the second reading and final passage calendar for today. I got it. Numbers 240598, 240604, 240179, 240180, 240181, 240182, 240492, 240058, 240157, 240466, 240372, 240373, 240374, 240375, 240376, 240377, 240378, 240379, 240416, 240417, 240467, 240470, 240494, 240428-A, 240434, 240371, 240500, and 240018. The following bills are being held, 240427.
Second.
Thank you. Before considering the bills and resolutions, we will consider public comment as follows. Your public comment must concern matters on the second reading and final passage calendars for possible action at today's council session. All speakers must sign up in order to testify. If you have not already signed up for today's session, please do so now by giving your name and his assent at the table outside the rails to my left. Once you have signed up, you will be called in the order in which your name appears on a sign-up sheet. Under ideal circumstances, public commenters each will have three minutes to speak. However, this time limit, however, this time limit may vary from session to session. Counsel will be at ease. Counsel is resumed. Today the time limit will be two minutes due to the volume of individuals who will be public commenting. In order to be fair, all those wishing to speak, I intend to hold faithfully to the two-minute limit. When you begin speaking, you will see a green light on the podium. When there are 30 seconds remaining to your time, the light will turn yellow, which is your reminder to conclude your remarks. Once two minutes have passed, the light will turn red and the sergeant-at-arms will disconnect the microphone. At that point, please yield the podium to the next speaker if you have not done so already. I also reserve the right pursuant to our rules of council to limit repetitious comments on the same matter. I will now ask the chief clerk to please read the name of our first speaker.
Rufina Rodriguez. May Maria Diaz, Olivia Rodriguez, and Veronica Perez also make their way to the podium.
You can begin your testimony.
Rufina will be delivering her testimony in Spanish, and I will deliver the same testimony in English for her. Buenos dias, concejales. Mi nombre es Rufina Rodriguez y soy organizadora latina con la Alianza Nacional de Trabajadoras del Hogar en capítulo en Pennsylvania. Trabajé por diez años limpiando casas y dentro de esta industria hay muchos abusos por parte de los empleadores y es necesario tener mejores leyes laborales y protecciones para todos los trabajadores de Filadelfia, no solo para las trabajadoras del hogar. Es muy triste saber que no contamos con el presupuesto para la oficina de protección a los trabajadores bajo el departamento laboral.
Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Rufina Rodriguez, and I'm the organizer for the Latina community with the National Domestic Workers Alliance in Pennsylvania. I worked for 10 years were cleaning houses, and in this industry, there are many abuses by employers, and it is necessary to have better laws and protections for all workers in Philadelphia, not just domestic workers. It is very sad to know that we do not have the budget for the Office of Work Protection under the Department of Labor that we fought so hard for.
Esta oficina de protecciones a los trabajadores no cuenta con el personal para poder responder a nuestras quejas cuando los empleadores no respetan las leyes y tenemos que esperar meses para poder tener una respuesta. Estoy profundamente preocupada por la seguridad de los trabajadores porque somos esenciales ya que aportamos gran parte del crecimiento económico para la ciudad de Filadelfia. Contribuimos con los impuestos aún sin un estatus migratorio. Nuestra aportación es vital para el desarrollo económico.
This office does not have the staff to be able to respond to our complaints when employers do not respect the laws, and we have to wait months to get a response. I am deeply concerned about the safety of workers because we are essential and we contribute much to the economic growth of the entire city of Philadelphia because we contribute taxes even without an immigration status. Our contribution is vital to economic development.
Dejar a los trabajadores sin protecciones es terrible, no solo para los que no pueden defender sus derechos, aún cuando ya tenemos una carta de derechos para las trabajadoras del hogar, que no está siendo respetada por los empleadores. Sabemos que continúan rompiendo las leyes. Tener una oficina totalmente financiada nos ayuda a tener respuesta rápida a las quejas presentadas, materiales en diferentes idiomas para poder educar a los trabajadores y a los empleadores.
Leaving workers without protections is terrible because they cannot defend their rights. We have a domestic worker bill of rights that is not respected by employers. Having fully funded Office of Worker Protections help us to have a quick response to complaints filed, materials in different languages, and to be able to educate workers and employers.
Lamento esta decisión del presupuesto que fue negada, pero aún así seguiremos luchando por tener mejores protecciones para los trabajadores. Necesitamos el apoyo de todos ustedes para poder ganar las protecciones contra las represalias para todos los trabajadores que vamos a presentar este otoño. Y recuerden que cada uno de los trabajadores necesita ser protegido. Muchas gracias.
I'm disappointed by this budget decision, but will continue to fight to protect all for more protections, to protect all workers against retaliation, and we will be introducing this law this coming fall. And remember, every single worker needs to be protected. Thank you so much for your time to listen to our testimony.
Soy la señora María del Carmen Díaz. Soy mi líder en las trabajadoras del hogar. Vivo en Filadelfia desde hace 27 años. Cuido ancianos, limpio casas, y cuido personas de la tercera edad. Hoy estoy aquí nuevamente alzando mi voz y expresando mis sentimientos. Tengo mucha tristeza al ver que el presupuesto de la ciudad aprobado no solo no financió plenamente la oficina de protección de los trabajadores, sino que aparte les hizo un recorte de cerca de 470 mil del presupuesto del año pasado. Esto es inaceptable. Tenemos que seguir luchando por lograr este presupuesto. No es justo que la mayoría de las manos obreras de esta ciudad pase por un abuso de robo de salario. Somos esenciales. La ciudad no puede ignorarnos. Nosotros confiamos en la oficina de protección de trabajadores. Estamos cansados. Esenciales y perder trabajo por nuestros derechos. El ayuntamiento no aprobó la legislación laboral, que es aplaudida en todo el país. Sin embargo, ha vuelto a dejar esos mandatos sin financiación y sin aplicación. Es tan vergonzoso que la oficina de protección esté en estas condiciones, aún sabiendo cuánto ha crecido Filadelfia. Esta oficina tiene un empleado a tiempo completo por cada 197 mil trabajadores, y aunque el personal trabaja muy duro, esta escasez de fondo significa mucho para nosotros. Esto quiere decir que antes, por cada caso, tardaban en resolverlo de tres a seis meses. Ahora, con esta negación del presupuesto, el recorte de fondos, ya siendo que haga caso, nunca se abrirá. Esto impacta terriblemente a nuestros hermanos afrodescendientes, a nuestros hermanos indocumentados, y a todas las comunidades que vivimos aquí y que hacemos trabajo, que hace funcionar esta gran ciudad. Yo principalmente por mi propia experiencia, jamás nadie de mis empleadores me ha pagado tiempo por enfermedad. Nunca he pagado, me han pagado vacaciones, jamás se me ha pagado tiempo extra. La negación del presupuesto me impacta porque hemos pasado por muchos abusos de robo de salario. Somos 16 mil trabajadoras domésticas, y cada una de nosotros tenemos historia de abusos. Apreciamos las defensores del consejo que ha apoyado la sistemática. que ha apoyado sistemáticamente a los trabajadores y ahora dependemos de ustedes para apoyar la nueva legislación, para ampliar las protecciones contra las represalias de los empleadores cuando la presentemos en otoño de este año. Tras el fracaso de este presupuesto, les deben a las trabajadoras de esta protección. Muchas gracias.
Good morning. My name is Mrs. María del Carmen Díaz and I'm a member and leader of the National Domestic Workers Alliance. I come from Mexico and have been a house cleaner, caregiver of children and the elderly for twenty-seven years. Today, I'm here raising my voice and expressing my feelings. I'm very sad to see that the city budget approved not only did not fully fund the Office of Worker Protections but also cut the money by close to four hundred and seventy thousand from last year's budget. This is unacceptable. We have to keep fighting to get this budget. It is not fair that most of the working people in this city go through wage theft, abuse. We are essential. The city cannot ignore us. We trust the Office of Worker Protections. We are tired of threats of immigration. We are tired of retaliation and losing our jobs for defending our rights. The city council approved labor legislation that is applauded all over the country. However, it has again left those mandates unfunded and unenforced. It is so shameful that the Office of Worker Protection is in such a condition even though we know how much Philadelphia has grown. This office has one full-time employee for every one hundred and ninety-seven thousand workers and although the staff works very hard, this shortage of funds means a lot to us. And after this failure of this budget, we believe you owe workers this protection. Thank you very much.
Buenos días. Mi nombre es Olivia Rodriguez. Soy miembro y líder de Alianza Nacional de Trabajadoras del Hogar en el capítulo de Filadelfia. Fui niñera por más de cinco años y ahora sigo siendo trabajadora del hogar como limpiadora de casas por más de una década y hoy estoy aquí para expresar mis sentimientos de decepción y descontento. Y todo esto es por el presupuesto de la ciudad que no nos fue aprobado. Yo como trabajadora del hogar, siento que es importante que nuestra oficina de protección a los trabajadores sea financiada totalmente porque tenemos, ¿por qué tenemos que esperar meses para ver respuesta rápida? No es justo. Y no es justo porque tenemos que esperar mucho tiempo. También estamos descontentos porque se cortó el presupuesto que ya teníamos. La oficina de protección al trabajador también cortó el presupuesto del año pasado para el Departamento del trabajo. Esto no es justo para nosotras como trabajadoras ya que el impacto de la falta de financiación para todos los trabajadores de la ciudad de Filadelfia nos sigue afectando por la falta de protección y que nuestra carta de derechos que ya tenemos, por favor, sea respetada por nuestros empleadores. Como trabajadoras del hogar, sufrimos mucha discriminación, robo de salarios, no tenemos beneficios y trabajamos tiempo extra sin ser remuneradas. Cuando nos cancelan nuestros trabajos, no nos avisan con anticipación y pagamos gastos de pasajes sin recompensa. Somos invisibilizadas y con este corto en el presupuesto aún no se invilice más. En mi caso, me gustaría que nos apoyaran para poder ganar nuestra campaña contra las represalias porque aunque obtuvimos la carta de derechos de los empleadores, nos siguen violando nuestros derechos laborales y necesitamos que nos apoyen para poder ganar nuestra ley contra las represalias en otoño cuando se las presentemos. Les pido, por favor, nos apoyen y agradezco su tiempo. Muchas gracias.
Good morning. My name is Olivia Rodriguez and I'm a member and leader of the National Domestic Workers Alliance. I was a nanny for over five years and now I continue to be a domestic worker as a house cleaner with over a decade of experience. Today, I'm here to express my feelings of disappointment and discontent about the city budget with the support for the Office of Worker Protections. As a domestic worker, I feel it is important that our Office of Worker Protections is fully funded. We have to wait months to see a response and it is not fair that the budget is cut even below last year's levels. This is not fair to us workers because the impact of the lack of funding for all workers in Philadelphia continues to affect us because of the lack of labor protections. The Bill of Rights that we already have must be respected by our employers. As domestic workers, we suffer from discrimination, wage theft, total lack of benefits, and no overtime. When our work is canceled, we are not given advance notice despite having already paid for transportation costs. We are invisibilized and this budget cut invisibilizes us even further. In my case, I would like you to support us in order to win our campaign against retaliation because even though we obtained the Domestic Worker Bill of Rights, employers continue to violate these labor laws. We need your support in order to win our campaign in the fall when we introduce the new anti-retaliation legislation. I ask you to please support us and I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Hola, buenos días. Mi nombre es Verónica Pérez y soy madre, líder comunitaria, y soy parte del Comité de Trabajadores de Restaurante. Hoy estoy aquí porque me siento completamente engañada por el presupuesto aprobado por el Ayuntamiento. Vine aquí al concejal municipal en abril y les comenté a todos ustedes sobre mi intensa experiencia sobre el acoso sexual en la industria de restaurantes y como no tenía un sistema de apoyo, estoy horrorizada de que el presupuesto de la ciudad aprobado no solo no fue financiado plenamente a la oficina de protección de trabajador sino también hubo un corte adicional de cuatrocientos sesenta mil por debajo del presupuesto del año pasado para el Departamento de Trabajo que OWP se encuentra dentro. El acoso sexual es frecuente en la industria restauranteras. Ahora, los trabajadores como yo que sufren acoso en los restaurantes tendrán aún menos apoyo en la ciudad. Es su rol brindarles estas protecciones. Los funcionarios electos han fallado absolutamente a los trabajadores de bajos salarios, no sindicalizados que dependen de la ciudad a través de la Oficina de Protección de Trabajadores para proteger los derechos laborales. Tras el fracaso de este presupuesto, ahora dependemos de que cada uno de ustedes apoye las nuevas legislaciones para ampliar las protecciones contra las represalias en los empleadores cuando les presentemos en otoño. Ustedes nos deban estas protecciones y recordaremos las acciones que tomen. Gracias.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Verónica Pérez and I'm a mother and community leader and I'm part of the Restaurant Worker Committee, El Comité. I am here because I feel completely cheated by the budget approved by the city council. I came here to city council in April and told all of you about the intense experience with sexual harassment in the restaurant industry and how I had no support system. I am appalled that the city budgets passed and did not only, not only did not fully fund the Office of Worker Protections but there was also additional cut of four hundred and seventy thousand dollars below last year's budget for the Department of Labor. Sexual harassment is rampant in the restaurant industry. Now, workers like me who experience harassment in restaurants will have even less support from the city. It is your role to provide us with these protections. Elected officials have absolutely failed the low-wage, non-union workers who rely on the city through the Office of Worker Protection to protect their labor rights. After the failure of this budget, we now depend on each of you to support new legislation to expand protections when we introduce them in the fall. You owe us these protections and we will remember the actions you take. Thank you.
We also have Maria Leles and Rosalia Yerma.
I appreciate everyone's patience with language justice.
Buenos días. Mi nombre es María Vélez. Soy de México. Tengo dieciocho años trabajando en la limpieza. He sufrido abusos laborales. Me uní a la Alianza Nacional de Trabajadoras del Hogar porque me dio una luz de que las cosas pueden cambiar gracias a nuestra carta de derechos de las trabajadoras del hogar. Ya nos sentimos con un poco de esperanza. Ahora hay quien nos apoya para tomar acción pero hoy estoy muy decepcionada porque el presupuesto no incluye a las trabajadoras y corta nuestros sueños para hacer la carta de derechos y otros derechos laborales una realidad. Lo único que queremos es trabajar para vivir dignamente. Necesitamos algo drástico para parar a esos patrones abusadores. Los concejales y los alcaldes cortaron el presupuesto para el Departamento de Trabajo que implementa nuestros derechos por cuatrocientos setenta mil dólares y eso es un ataque contra nuestros derechos. Todavía seguimos viendo abusos laborales. Necesitamos el presupuesto de la ciudad y también una nueva ley contra las represalias. Es la forma de enfrentar a estos patrones abusivos. Queremos que nos apoyen para aprobar nuestra nueva ley contra las represalias en otoño. Es una necesidad de nuestra ciudad para sentirnos protegidas. No tenemos protección real contra las represalias cuando luchamos en favor de lo que es justo en nuestros trabajos. Gracias por escucharnos y seguimos en la lucha hasta que logremos el presupuesto necesario en Filadelfia.
Good morning. My name is María and I'm from Mexico. I've been a cleaner for eighteen years and have suffered labor abuses. I joined the National Domestic Workers Alliance because it gave me a light that things could change. Thanks to our Domestic Worker Bill of Rights, we already feel a little bit of hope. Now, there's someone who supports us to take action but today I'm very disappointed because the budget does not include the workers and cuts our dreams to make the Bill of Rights and other labor rights a reality. All we want is to work for a decent living. We need to do something drastic and stop these abusive bosses. The council members and mayor cut the budget for the Department of Labor which implements our rights and that is an attack on our rights. We are still seeing labor abuses. We need the city and also a new anti-retaliation law. It's the only way to confront these abusive employers. We want your support to pass our new law in the fall. It is a necessity for our city to feel protected. We have no real protection from retaliation when we fight for what rights we have in the job. Thank you for listening to us and we will still fight until we achieve the budget that Philadelphia needs.
Hola, buenos días. Mi nombre es Rosalia Lerma. Tengo quince años trabajando como trabajadora del hogar en Filadelfia. Soy de México. Soy un miembro, líder, de la Alianza Nacional de las Trabajadoras del Hogar capítulo en Pensilvania. Estoy aquí para compartir mi decepción y enojo al ver que no se nos dio el presupuesto que estábamos solicitando y al contrario, se redujo el presupuesto del Departamento de Trabajo donde está la oficina de protección a los trabajadores. Sabemos que nuestras compañeras han esperado hasta seis meses para que se investigue su caso de abuso laboral y ahora con estos cambios pues será peor. Ya sabemos que los patrones no están cumpliendo con las leyes. Todavía hay mucho robo de salario, humillaciones, amenazas sobre deportación, discriminación, acoso sexual en el trabajo y represalias aún con la muerte. Mucha gente tiene miedo de presentar una demanda al gobierno porque temen de las represalias. Con estos cambios al presupuesto que ha hecho la administración, aún con nuestro pedimiento del apoyo económico, la justicia contra estos abusos no podrá ser posible ya que no se podrá poner más personal que hagan las investigaciones necesarias. Si antes sentíamos que el gobierno no estaba dando apoyo necesario al trabajo seguro, digno y libre de represalias, pues ahora nos sentimos aún más desprotegidos. Esperamos contar con ustedes para que nos brinden esta protección al apoyar una nueva legislación que garantice que los malos tratos a los trabajadores se tomen en serio. Nos veremos cuando la presentemos en unos meses. Muchas gracias por el tiempo que nos ha prestado y esperemos que escuchen nuestras peticiones y reclamos.
Hello, good morning. My name is Rosalia Lerma and I've been working as a domestic worker in Philadelphia for fifteen years. I'm from Mexico and a leader of the National Domestic Workers Alliance. I am here to share my disappointment and anger because we were not given the budget we were requesting and on the contrary, the budget for the Department of Labor where the Office of Worker Protections is, was reduced. We know that our domestic worker colleagues have waited up to six months for their labor abuse case to be investigated and now with these changes, it will be worse. We already know that the employers are not complying with the laws. There's still a lot of wage theft, humiliation, threats of deportation, discrimination, sexual harassment at work, and retaliation even with death. Many people are afraid to file a claim with the government because they fear retaliation. While this budget decision made by the administration, even after our request for financial support, justice against these abuses will not be possible. They will not be able to put more personnel to do the necessary investigations. While we have felt that the government was not providing the necessary support for safe, dignified, and retaliation-free work, at this moment, we feel even less protected. We will be counting on you to bring us that protection by supporting new legislation towards making sure workers' abuse is taken seriously. We will see you when we introduce it in a few months. Thank you very much and I hope you listen to our pleas.
May Bishop J. Felton, president of the Black Clergy, please make their way to the podium; then Maurice Mitchell, Nicole Klingerman, and Kate Perez. Bishop J. Lewis Felton, president of the Philadelphia Black Clergy.
Thank you so kindly certainly to Councilwoman Cindy Bass and President Kenyatta Johnson to the city council. We, the members of Black Clergy of Philadelphia and Vicinity, are committed to making life better for all the citizens of our great community. We are inter-denominational, interracial, ecumenical, and we seek to serve through the mantra of servant leadership. We believe that leadership begins with the servant's heart. And so we have with us a number of members of Black Clergy who have come today to accept your resolution. We appreciate you being involved with us. You were with us in January, Councilwoman Bass, for our celebration of Martin Luther King as well as our installation. September the eleventh, we will observe the anniversary of this attack upon America by honoring law enforcement and first responders. Our normal meetings will begin the fourth Thursday in September at Mount Airy at nine-thirty in the morning. We also will be observing Martin Luther King's celebration again the second Sunday in January twenty-twenty-five. We want to urge every citizen of our community to register and vote because this is one of the most critical elections that we will have in the history of America. Philadelphia is the birthplace of America. May God use us for a spiritual renaissance, a rebirthing, a commitment to freedom and justice for all people. Thank you, Councilwoman Bass.
Maurice Mitchell; then Nicole Klingerman, Kate Perez, and Adriana George.
Good morning. My name is Maurice Mitchell, National Director of the Working Families Party. Good morning, members of Philadelphia City Council and members of the community. It's such an honor to be with you all. I am so grateful to be here and to be joined with members of the Working Families Party's Pennsylvania State Committee. State Committee members; our WFP friends, leaders, and members of the Working Families Party. I am grateful to lead a party with representatives like minority leader, councilmember Kendra Brooks; and minority whip, councilmember Nicholas O'Rourke. Our WFP reps have fought and won big for working people. We have the receipts. Eviction diversion; the Angel Davis Eviction Accountability Act; legislation to protect community gardens; nineteen million in rental assistance to keep people in their homes. Yes, you can clap for that. Increases in funding for community college in Philadelphia; funding the Built to Last program. And today, we're also voting on a resolution on the party's biggest legislative priority this year: fully funding our public education system and stopping Republican billionaire voucher schemes, which use- fully funding our public education system and stopping Republican billionaire voucher schemes, which use... Those schemes use taxpayer dollars to fund private institutions with the false promise of saving students. And unfortunately, Pennsylvania has the widest funding gap between wealthy and poor school districts of any state in the country, with the wealthiest school district spending 33% more on each student than the poorest districts. Last year, the Commonwealth Court found this system unconstitutional. The clear solution is fully funding our schools and not the voucher programs that Republicans are pushing, which primarily benefit wealthy families already sending their children to private schools. Vouchers do not remedy PA's broken and unconstitutional school funding system. I am... You can clap for that. And I, for one, am proud to be a part of the WFP and to help build a party that delivers for working people every day. We've got to get to work. We hope that you will join us. Thank you.
Nicole Klingerman, Kate Perez, then Adriana George.
Hi, my name is Nicole Klingerman, and I'm the Pennsylvania Director of the National Domestic Workers Alliance. We represent 16,000 nannies, house cleaners, and caregivers in Philadelphia. And here we're also today to represent the 750,000 working Philadelphians who depend on the Office of Worker Protections to protect their labor support and who are left on the cutting room floor at 2:00 a.m. in your budget negotiations. These workers have been here every single Thursday, including today, losing money that they absolutely don't have. Domestic workers make an average of $10,000 a year in this city. They are cut out of every level of labor protections because of the codified legacy of enslavement in this country. The Domestic Workers' Bill of Rights that you all unanimously passed and complained to us every single Thursday that how would it be enforced? I'll tell you how it would be enforced if you funded the Office of Worker Protections. We're asking for $2.6 million in a $5 billion budget, and instead, Council and Mayor Parker are cutting $469,000 from the poorest people: black, brown, undocumented, don't speak English, gender oppressed, single moms. For why? Like whatever kind of political stuff happens in this building, to leave these women on the cutting room floor is absolutely unacceptable, and it's disgraceful. We know that the money is here. We know that the staff are making $300,000 a year. We know that taxpayers' money are paying for their mustangs cut in front of this building. And you're going till 2:00 a.m.? And we know who stood with us, because we're not dumb-dums. These women deserve so much more respect than the budget that you're about to pass. And we know who supports us, and we thank you for that. And we're going to be back in the fall with Minority Leader Brooks's legislation to expand anti-retaliation protections. And we expect every single one of you to be co-sponsors on that legislation.
Kate Perez, then Adriana George.
Good morning, Honorable Council President Kenyatta Johnson and Councilmembers. My name is Adriana. I am a former nanny with 16 years' experience and presently an organizer with We Dream in Black Philadelphia, a program for black domestic workers within the National Domestic Workers Alliance. I am here to express my anger and frustration that a city budget passed and not only failed to fully fund the Office of Worker Protection, but cut an additional $460,000 below last year's budget for the Department of Labor, which the Office of Worker Protection is housed within. Once again, a workforce that is non-unionized, who rely on the city via the Office of Worker Protection to protect their labor rights are left out. This industry is mostly dominated by black and brown immigrants. Many of us are constantly faced with intimidation due to our immigration status, defamation of character by our employers that prevents us from getting jobs, often leaves us with great financial burdens and wage theft, to name a few of problems that are deemed as not important by this budget. This has a devastating and disproportionate impact on people like me: black, brown, undocumented, and gender oppressed people who do the work that makes this city run. Too often, I am hearing from my nanny peers that are suffering in silence but don't feel safe in coming forward because there is not enough protection in place for them to do so. With an underfunded Office of Worker Protection, workers are not able to take full advantage of the city labor protection. Domestic worker deserves strong investment in the Office of Worker Protection. You cannot continue to fail domestic workers. We are the ones that make all other jobs possible. We appreciate the council members who have constantly stood with workers, and now we are expecting every single one of you to support our new legislation expanding protection for domestic workers in the city of Philadelphia.
Kate Perez. Can Aurora Munoz, Nina Huang, and Madison Nardi also make their way to the podium? Kate Perez?
Good morning, council members. Can you please raise your hand if you've ever been to Israel? You may have noticed how differently people are treated based on which passport they held, how only some people were allowed to walk on certain streets, and other people were kept on strict calorie counts, and even children inhalers were banned from crossing their borders. In Israeli exchange programs, our PPD trains with the army so violent that just yesterday, the United Nations concluded that Israel has committed the crime of extermination in Gaza. This comes right after they added Israel to the list of perpetrators who harm children.
You signed up to speak on the operating budget.
I'm so sorry. I'm going to change that to the Aid Workers' Bill.
Okay. Can you go back to the operating budget?
Okay.
Which is what you signed up to speak about.
Okay. So with our taxes, Israel kills about 10 children on average. They... Sorry, not kills. They lose about one or both legs every day in Gaza. Now Palestine holds the record for country with the highest number of child amputees in the world. Our budget is funding the police workers but ignoring our aid workers. On April 30th...
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
You have to speak on the operating budget.
Okay.
That's what you signed up. That's what you said you were here to speak about.
On April 30th, the U.N. reported that 254 aid workers have been assassinated since October 4th. I just wanted to honor some of them.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
You have to go back to the operating budget. Councilman Jones, as you are aware... There is... As you are aware... Councilman Jones. Councilman Jones, that's not accurate. Councilman Jones, as you are aware, when folks sign up to speak on a certain topic, that is what we ask them to speak about. She said she wanted to speak on the operating budget. So I'm asking her to remain... Keep your comments related to... Keep your comments related to the operating budget, please.
The operating budget is allotting another extra about $30 million for the police while our schools are still underfunded, while our domestic workers are still begging for rights. All of this money is going towards funding the country that Israel reported has killed more than two... That the U.N. reported has killed more than 254 aid workers. I just wanted to honor the Palestinian Red Crescent Society, whose ambulance was targeted, and Yusef Al-Zaino and Ahmed Al-Madoun were killed during their rescue mission, their approved rescue mission for the six-year-old Hinrajab. Regular civilians have become aid workers as they dig through the rubble to try to collect pieces of their neighbors. We have to talk about Palestine every chance we get to honor the martyrs and fight for the living. Bassan Oda said, "Getting used to genocide is the best way to ensure its completion." Free Palestine.
Aurora Munoz, Nina Huang, Madison Nardi, then Erica Ford.
Good morning. Hello again. My name is Aurora Munoz, and I'm the organizing manager for the National Domestic Workers Alliance in Pennsylvania. We're here, all of us united, because we want to express our frustration and deep disappointment with the 2025 city budget. Since the beginning of the year, we have been asked... We have asked for a $2.6 million budget for the Office of Worker Protection. You signed pledges, accepted our valentines. We testified, spoke to you in the halls of this building, and sent letters of support for this budget. Week after week, very low-wage workers took off from work to speak with you about the need to fully fund their labor protections, and their city let them down. Domestic workers face widespread labor abuse, like wage theft, retaliation, sexual and racial harassment, forced labor, and even assault. And they have been systematically excluded from labor protections like the minimum wage and the right to unionize. Even protections that include them are continuously violated. For example, wage theft, which the Economic Policy Institute estimates to be up to $50 billion annually in the country. That's more than all robberies, car thefts, and burglaries combined. We have seen victims of this theft be evicted, not be able to pay bills, and then have to expose themselves to even more abuse by accepting exploitative jobs. This administration says it cares about law enforcement and making the streets safer for residents, but it is not enforcing laws that would make workplaces safer. And we ask for $2.6 million out of a budget of $5 billion so that we can start to pave a foundation for a city that truly respects all kinds of work. This is a miniscule amount compared to the severity of labor abuse, and it was deemed too much. We will continue to fight for more because domestic workers deserve more, and Philadelphia deserves more. In a few months, we will be introducing anti-retaliation legislation to protect all workers. Our disappointment today will fuel our efforts to win. Thank you and see you in the fall.
Nina Huang?
Hi, my name is Nina Huang, and I work at the National Domestic Workers Alliance as the Director of Operations. I am also a new resident of Philadelphia, and it is why I am here today to express my disappointment that the city's budget has passed with significant cuts to the Office of Worker Protections. This office has never been fully funded, and the additional cut of $469,000 significantly hinders the work that this office could do. I moved to Philly last November and in part chose the city as my new home because of its reputation for being worker-friendly and for passing pretty groundbreaking progressive laws, like the Domestic Worker Bill of Rights, which protects nannies, house cleaners, and caregivers. But it is one thing to have and to celebrate laws that protect workers, and it's another to actually enforce those laws to make sure everyone can benefit from those protections. By cutting the Office of Worker Protections budget even further, you are sending the clear message that you do not care about the workers that make the city run and that you do not value their work. The administration wants city employees to come back to the office and to this area. But what about the workers that care for your children while you are at work? Who serve the food you eat and who make your morning and afternoon coffee pick-me-ups? Those workers are now even more vulnerable to exploitation from bad employers, who can continue to steal their wages, deny them sick time, and to threaten workers who advocate for their legally mandated rights, and all with minimal repercussions. The City Council has the opportunity to let the workers of this city know that they are valued and that the city has their back by reinstating the funds that were originally cut from this office's budget and supporting legislation this fall to expand protections against employer retaliation. After the failure of this budget, you owe workers this protection. Thank you to the council members who have consistently stood with domestic workers and other low-wage workers and for the opportunity to testify on this issue. I look forward to seeing your co-sponsorship of the new anti-retaliation legislation this fall. Thank you.
Madison Nardi, Erica Ford, then Lorenzo Cannon-Umstead.
Good morning, City Council and my comrades. My name is Madison Nardi, residing in South Philadelphia, and I'm a longtime worker and community organizer. I started my organizing experience in high school, fighting to end the School Reform Commission, and then as a worker leader with One Pennsylvania, fighting for a fair work week. Today, I stand before you as the Director of 215 People's Alliance, and I am proud to speak in support of honoring Maurice Mitchell. Maurice Mitchell, the National Director of the Working Families Party, has been a dedicated organizer for racial and economic justice. His efforts have championed black and working-class communities in Philadelphia and nationwide, fighting for resources and against the privatization of public schools and so much more. Maurice's leadership began in his teenage years and continued to Howard University, where he led efforts against police brutality and private prisons. His life took a pivotal turn after Hurricane Sandy and the tragic killing of Mike Brown, leading to support on-the-ground organizations in Ferguson. Under Maurice's leadership, the Pennsylvania Working Families Party has built a political home for multiracial working-class people, leading to the progressive victories like the election of Larry Krasner and Councilmember Kendra Brooks and Nicholas O'Rourke. Their efforts have resulted in significant achievements, including the now-permanent eviction diversion program and substantial rental assistance to keep people in their homes. Councilmember Kendra Brooks secured over $50 million for her plan for Philly families, supporting home repairs, community college funding, and various community programs. True leadership means listening to our communities and making decisions that improves lives, qualities Maurice truly embodies. And I urge this council to follow the footsteps of powerful leaders like Maurice, who tirelessly fight for working people. The workers in this city, as well as the workers behind me, deserve your support. Our community feels deeply disappointed and betrayed by this council's failure to fully fund the Department of Labor, leaving our city's workers unprotected. Additionally, support Resolution 240598 condemning private school vouchers. As a product of public schools, someone who grew up in poverty, faced eviction, and as a result struggles with PTSD in my adulthood, I know firsthand that our schools need full funding. Kids in our schools endure hardships like I did every day, and they deserve full resources that benefit all students, not just the ones that are cherry-picked to go to private schools with vouchers that do not even fulfill the bill. I got one sentence left. Thank you, Maurice, for your unwavering leadership, which has achieved so much and inspires us to continue fighting for worker protections and fully-funded public schools so that we can all be liberated. Thank you.
Erica Ford, then Lorenzo Cannon-Umstead, and Brahim Douglas, then Johanna Diaz.
Good morning. My name is Erica Ford. I am an educator, but I am also a proud parent of three children, two previously attended public school, and one who currently attends public school today. My two oldest children graduated from public school, and my youngest daughter will be a sophomore in the fall. My children have been through private schools, as well as charter schools, and public schools. Far... Far by the best experience they've had has been in public schools. Each of them have experienced traumatic... Have had traumatic experience in private, as well as the charter schools. We cannot allow the private schools to operate with... Without any accountability or oversight. And we cannot afford to defund our public schools, which is what vouchers are about to do. Our regular city high schools have good staff and support our children, including mine. It doesn't make sense to put money into vouchers when our state could invest that same money into public education and give the children the basic necessities, extra resources, and the support staff that they need. It would make our public schools the ones that my children love and my current... My child, who's currently in public school, also loves, that much more successful. Thank you to our City Council, specifically my favorite City Council member Kendra Brooks, for leading this important resolution. The Pennsylvania state legislation needs to say no to school voucher expansion and needs to fully fund our public schools. Thank you.
Lorenzo Cannon-Umstead, then Brahim Douglas, Johanna Diaz, then Julia Boyer.
Good morning to my comrades, council here, council president, guests, workers, and the people of the city of Philadelphia. Good morning, my name is Lorenzo P. Cannon-Umstead. I am the Northeast Organizer of the 215 People's Alliance. 215 People's Alliance is an organizational affiliate of the Working Families Party, PA State Committee. WFPPA has played a key role in wins for progressives across the Commonwealth, which has captured the attention of Pennsylvanians and have shown them what the potential here could really be. The reason I am here to speak today is in support of Mr. Maurice Mitchell, the National Director of the Working Families Party. Mr. Mitchell has been an impactful voice and an example for the working class in cities like Philadelphia, for the working class, working endlessly around securing resources for our children and countering the current attempts to privatize their education. For me, Mr. Mitchell has been an influence and inspiration to get involved. For me, Mr. Mitchell has been an influence and inspiration to get involved with the more serious realities of the political landscape for marginalized people. In our city, something I have noticed growing older is that in cities like Philadelphia, there can often be a playground in it for a culture of political and community misleadership, if that makes sense, which I feel has had a hold on our city and other cities, but especially our city and its offices going back to the early 20th century. Misleadership as a concept can be defined as a maladaptive behavior that is usually formed by a person or people who in our society is usually marginalized, but use forms such as the small-business community and local government to bring forth selfish or opportunistic agendas, and these agendas are often weaponized against the rest of the marginalized community in the name of achievement based on identity, while disguising all of this as a quest for personal ambition, excellence, and success. People like Mr. Mitchell aren't misleaders, but steward deliberation and results where they are and where they work. People like Mr. Mitchell have an ambition for their people and a collective liberation for us, more than personal ambition. Personal ambition isn't a bad thing, but for real progress under this society, we must push aside personal ambition for the greater collective ambition of our people and the collective ambition of our workers here also, who should be protected to the utmost. The collective ambition of our children also. Their needs need to be considered and is taken as seriously as some of us take the ambition of billionaires and contractors here in our city and other cities in America. Today, let's think of and raise up leaders like Maurice Mitchell in our cities and communities so the best results can be produced with decency. My name is Lorenzo P. Cannon Umstead, and I'm the Northeast Organizer of 215 PA. Thank you.
Brahim Douglas, then Johanna Diaz, Julia Boyer, and Siobhan Almo Bovar.
Hello, my name is Brahim Douglas. I'm the Outreach Coordinator of the United Here Philadelphia Hospitality Academy and the Vice President of United Here Local 274. This is really simple for us. We are very proud of the work that we've been doing, the partnership with Working Families Party. We stand together for working-class people. I'm happy to be here to speak on behalf of Mr. Maurice Mitchell and all the great work that he has accomplished. For working people, check this out. Eviction Divergence Program, $19 million in rental assistance. If do more, talk less was a person, it's Maurice Mitchell. With Working Families Party, we will continue to fight for working-class people, including stadium workers, who are fighting for wages and healthcare as we speak. Again, we support Working Families Party. Let's pass this resolution on behalf of Maurice Mitchell. Thank you so much.
Johanna Diaz.
Good morning, City Council. My name is Johanna Diaz, and I serve as the Secretary of the Board of Taller Puerto Ricano, a nonprofit organization committed to the preservation and celebration of Puerto Rican arts and culture situated in the Fair Hill section of the city. This year marks our 50th anniversary of dedicated service to the Puerto Rican community that is dispersed all over the city of Philadelphia. We appreciate the opportunity to support the resolution brought by Councilwoman Lozada to recognize the community organizations that advocate for the needs of Puerto Ricans that often move back and forth between the island and Philadelphia. In 2017, as Hurricane Maria and Irma approached, Taller Puerto Ricano joined the grassroots collaborative known as Unidos Pape EPR to offer relief in anticipation of the impending hurricanes. However, the extent of the devastation that unfolded on the island surpassed all expectations. Through this collaborative effort, over $400,000 was raised. Beneficiaries of this support included the donation of waterproof solar lanterns, the establishment of a mobile clinic, and the restoration of several fishing piers. In 2022, Hurricane Fiona barreled into a still-struggling Puerto Rico, and once again, Taller stepped up to provide support. Funds were raised for three organizations: Yde Bajo, a coalition of environmental and agricultural organizations to protect the natural heritage of the island; Taller Salud, dedicated to improving women's access to healthcare; and Comedores Sociales, an organization dedicated to combating hunger on the island. As the 2024 hurricane season approaches, Taller Puerto Ricano remains steadfast in its commitment to offering lifesaving support to the people of Puerto Rico in times of disaster, be it hurricanes, landslides, power outages, or earthquakes that affect our beloved families and friends. We appreciate the continued support and recognition received from the Councilmember Lozada and all those involved with these crucial efforts. Gracias, and I am a proud graduate of George Washington High School and employee of the School District of Philadelphia, so please fund our schools.
Julia Boyer, May Siobhan Almo Bovar, and Jasmine Taylor also make their way to the podium.
Hello, my name is Julia Boyer, and I was one of 33 peaceful protesters wrongfully arrested at the UPenn Gaza Solidarity Encampment on May 10. I'm disgusted by the allocation of another $30 million to the police in this city budget instead of anything that actually benefits our community. PPD wastes taxpayer funds to violently suppress peaceful protests against the ongoing genocide of Palestinians. At 5:30 a.m. on May 10, I woke up to hundreds of police beginning to swarm us. As we sat on the Ben Franklin statue, I watched a huge parade of officers in riot gear wielding batons enter the encampment. Beforehand, I had hoped that police would not come in the early morning since overtime pay would be so expensive, but considering the extremely disproportionate number of officers relative to protesters, clearly, PPD cares more about intimidation than not wasting city resources. PPD responded immediately with violence. Police exercised excessive use of force in the entirety of the sweep. Arrests began with an officer throwing a girl about my size face-first into the concrete. They continued to drag multiple protesters from the statue and throw them to the ground, resulting in head trauma for some. They kneed people in the face, dislocated shoulders, pulled people's hair, and double-cuffed people discriminately, resulting in loss of circulation. I had bruising afterward for weeks. At a follow-up protest on May 17, their use of force increased. An officer grabbed me by the neck and used that hand to push me over into a pole. They used taser and batons and injured many of my fellow protesters. Please note that police departments all across the country, including ours, train with Israel with the IOF through programs such as those offered by the ADL to exchange tactics of state violence like suppression of protests and racial profiling. Increased police funding does not keep us safe. This is not even mentioning the harm inflicted on communities of color by the PPD. PPD stifles our First Amendment right to protest against the genocide of Palestinians, not because of our conduct, but our cause. As we speak, bombs rain down on Rafa. On June 8, the IOF disguise themselves as humanitarian aid to begin their massacre on Nusserad Refugee Camp, where they murdered 274 Palestinians. Body parts cover the streets, 37,000 children orphaned. I urge the council to end its complicity in the ongoing genocide against Palestinians and call for a ceasefire and to pass a resolution honoring the aid workers and martyrs of Gaza. And I urge this council to vote no on the budget which approves another $30 million for a police department which protects the genocidal project over our community. Free Palestine.
Siobhan Almo Bovar, Jasmine Taylor, and Stephanie Ridgway.
Good morning, City Council. My name is Siobhan Almo Bovar. I live in the Fairmont section of Philadelphia, District 5. I'm a constituent of Councilmember Young. I'm here to testify on the fiscal year 2025 budget, and I want to tell you how disappointed I am. I'm a parent advocate, and I've been working for the last two years to encourage our city electives to prioritize our children in their actions. I worked with the Kids Campaign last year, and this year, I was here in March with other parents to begin our advocacy for kids. I've been following the budget process closely ever since. I'm reading in the news how the budget funds Mayor Parker's cleaner, greener, and safer initiatives. It puts money in affordable housing, homelessness, and drug treatment. I think all these things are good and needed for the city, but I'm disappointed that City Council didn't do anything beyond what the mayor proposed to make our children's lives better. You say children need to get educated K through 12, but they don't have the adequate tools for their education, and there is no clear pathway in the new budget to change that. I've been in this city all my life, and some problems that we have in the schools today are problems we had decades ago. Our children continue to suffer. It's tiring, and it's things like this that contributed in my decision to move. Earlier this year, my husband and I decided to pack up our bags and leave Philadelphia because it is too difficult to make it here. We have three sons that are growing up very quickly. They are 11, 10, and 5. We want them to have an opportunity to be safe and even to play outside here in the city. But, whew. But in Philly, all we are met with is struggle and lateral moves. I know I'm not the only family that has made this decision, and I want City Council to know this. We all know that our children are our future, so why didn't City Council do more to invest in them?
Jasmine Taylor, then Stephanie Ridgway, and Andrea Blasingame.
How you doing, City Council? My name is Jasmine Taylor. I live in West Philly. I am testifying about the 240179, 25, City Council Budget. I'm disappointed that y'all didn't decide to put money inside the schools. Our preschool kids start first. They need money for books, activities, and more for education. Our preschoolers need help, activities, and having more. Definitely for our preschoolers, they need things like devices and things to help them out. I'm angry and upset and disappointed that everyone going inside the schools, telling our children and taking pictures with them, but no one has time to put money inside the schools. Putting money inside the schools will help out our autism children, help out our children and teachers, putting certain paying money out of their pockets for our kids. They will have more money for our children. Definitely for our children for food, nasty food that our kids have to eat, that's not going to help them grow their education. They can't think smart if they don't eat smart. Our children have to have an education to have the power to do things. Y'all want our kids to do something in the community, but they can't because they have nowhere to go to. Our kids go to Cisabimor and do the dumbest things because they have nowhere to go to. No after-school, no programs, no things for our kids to do. And our children have started small at things that being a small mother, like I am, having an autism child, my child has nowhere to go to because there's no programs for them to go to. Something needs to be changed, and it starts with us and the City Council. Thank you.
Stephanie Ridgway, Andrea Blasingame, and Steve Grosswald.
Good morning, City Council. My name is Stephanie Ridgway. I am the Lower North Philadelphia CDC President. We are a nonprofit operating out of Lower North Philadelphia. Today, I'm here to speak on the resolution or the bill 240379. How many City Council members have had the support of nonprofits to help them get to where they are? Probably everybody in this room. If this bill is passed, it will make it more difficult for nonprofits to move forward and more paperwork, meaning that those that are the boots-on-the-ground in the community will not be able to do the work that they're doing now. The suggestion that I have is that perhaps we create some type of oversight or working group that can assist the nonprofits, but making it more difficult to work through problems, to receive funding, and to work with the city that often takes a long time to distribute funds to nonprofits is not a good idea. Our nonprofits are actually those that work in community on a regular basis on a shoestring profit, and they don't do it because they're looking to make money. They do it because they're concerned about their residents and their neighbors. So if you're sitting at City Council now and you've received help from nonprofits to get where you are, this is not the time to pass that bill. It is more likely that it would be better for us to look at ways to help nonprofits grow. Thank you.
Andrea Blasingame, Steve Grosswald, Darina Arce, and then Carmen Sita Maria Pedro.
Good morning, City Council. Hi, my name is Andrea Blasingame. I am a Philadelphian, West Philadelphian, in Jamie Gattia's district. I am here to talk about, testify for Bill 240179, the fiscal year 2025 budget. I must tell you that I am a champion for literacy. I am a proud reading captain. I volunteer with We Pack and Philly Reading Coaches. I am also a single mom of one son, Andrew, who is 15, pause for my heart attack, and the auntie of a now-17-month-old, and we are all Philadelphians proud here. But I am here to tell you how disappointed and frustrated I am about this budget. So I know that, as a literacy coach, that this budget affects us because you guys didn't really do more, and I think you could have done more. So I know there's a state budget. I was in Harrisburg, trust me. I was there. And we waiting on, you know, more decisions, and of course, that's going to help us when it's passed. But you guys had the opportunity to do more now, right here in Philadelphia. And it's very sad and heartbreaking that you didn't do more than what was already asked. So my issue is, I grew up here, and now I'm a mom, and it seems hard that my kids may have less than what I had. When I was at school, I had a library. You had a library when you were at school, right? But most of our schools don't have that, and it's foreign to me that that's okay. It's not okay. It's just to say it out loud in English is really hard. It's not okay, and I want you guys to feel that. As a mom, I want to crack your knuckles, and I want to pop your fingers because you could have did so much better. As a mom, I'mma tell you, I love you, and I'm praying for each and every one of you, but you could have done so much more, and I want you to keep that, and I want you to do more from now on because you can do more. You can do better. These are basic necessities. Principals should not have to decide between hiring a counselor and a police staff and food staff and get resources and things fixed at the same time. They need it all, and there's more of them now, so it takes more. My time is up, so I'm out of here, but I love you all.
Thank you.
Steve Grosswald, Darina Arce, and then Carmen Sita Maria Pedro, Rory Durgan, and Emily Cordero.
City Council? My name is Steve Grosswald. I'm the Executive Director and Founder of Mission Philadelphia. Our vision is ending hunger and homelessness in Philadelphia.
Could you speak into the microphone, sir, please?
Hello?
Yes, much better, absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My name is Steve Grosswald. I'm the Executive Director and Founder of Mission Philadelphia. Our vision is ending hunger and homelessness in Philadelphia by July 4, 2026. And this is Zura, my service animal. I want to congratulate the mayor and City Council for bringing the precipice of passing a $6.37 billion budget, an increase, I believe, of 2.8%, an additional $178 million. So have a round of applause for the City Council. That's it? Well, I'm not either. Okay, but two things can be true simultaneously. The council could do a great job, but the council could be criticized incredibly for not funding a program of 32 years of your predecessors in this council of passing, and that's SSP. The mayor said, "We cannot afford the city of Philadelphia to appropriate our very scarce resources to do it." On a $6.37 billion budget, not to fund $900,000, that's Starwood Mayor Rendell, is two things. It's A, fiscally irresponsible, and B, it's morally reprehensible. The program saves $250 million a year, so to not spend $900,000 but to spend $250... Now granted, that's not all out of city budgets. That could be state, federal budgets, et cetera, private insurance. Fiscally irresponsible and morally reprehensible. But we met with Adam Thiel and Deputy Gates. Okay, and we asked them, "Find alternative funding." So City Council and the mayor, if you're not going to fund... So city council and the mayor, if you're not going to fund a no-brainer, at least find partners to Penn, Drexel, Merck, GlaxoSmithKline. Someone else can fund this thing. $900,000. Know what the cost of age treatment is a year? $94,000. Hepatitis treatment, $84,000. You don't have to have too many people getting aged hepatitis to hit $900,000.
Thank you.
Darina Arce, Carmen Sita Maria Pedro, and then Rory Durgan.
Good afternoon. First, I'd like to give honor to God for being here today and be able to give my testimony or my statement. I'm here to oppose bill 240379, only to ask that the council get more information and seek discussions with community partners about this bill to oversight, to oversee the nonprofits. The nonprofits already are burdened with paperwork, not getting paid on time. We do want a fairer and a more quicker process for being paid. But I think that more information needs to be sent out to the public about this bill because we just, I just received it two days ago. And while it talks about exemptions, what exemptions are they talking about? What nonprofits did you even speak to to see if this is something that the nonprofits want to do? We're just asking that this bill not be voted on today. We need more information. We need to know what the processes are, who's going to be involved. I know it comes from finance committee, but we want to be, this is supposed to be a more diverse, equitable, and inclusion. So where was the inclusion? What nonprofits were a part of this decision? What community partners were part of this decision? What residents? So we're asking that you do not vote on this bill today, 240379. Thank you.
Carmen Sita Maria Pedro, then Rory Durgan, Emily Cordero, and Rafael Alvarez Fabo.
Hello, good mornings, council, good morning, city council, and thank you for letting my voice be heard today. My name is Rory, and I am a sixth grader in Philadelphia Public Schools. And I am here to encourage you all to keep vouchers out of our school. You could give me a voucher to go to, to go to a different school, maybe a newer or nicer building with more staff. But that would only help me, and it would only maybe help me. I would rather help hundreds of my classmates by funding the school so we all have everything we need to thrive. Sorry. Please support this resolution so that anyone at the Capitol who is trying to take away from our schools knows where Philly stands, sorry.
Thank you.
Emily Cordero, Rafael Alvarez Fabo, then Reverend Ruben Ortiz.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Emily Cordero, Director of Communications for Asociación Puerto Riquenos en Marcha, also known as APM, who are nonprofit agencies serving Philadelphia residents. We have over 15 centers in the city, and we are very proud to be here today. Thank you so much, Councilwoman Lozada, for presenting our resolution today for honoring people who and agencies who have helped victims of hurricanes in Puerto Rico. Philadelphia is deeply connected to Puerto Rico. It has the largest concentration of Puerto Ricans in one area. When Hurricane Maria struck, many families sought refuge here in Philadelphia. Collaborating with numerous Latino organizations, government agencies, and nonprofits like Lutheran, APM was part of this group spearheading the Greater Philadelphia Long-Term Recovery Committee, a groundbreaking initiative to aid evacuees despite disaster not occurring locally. This united effort supported over 2,000 families, 2,000, with housing, essential supplies, and comprehensive assistance. APM's dedicated team augmented by partnerships with organizations like PHA, facilitated housing, clothing, and furniture for over 200 families. Additionally, PHA provided crucial emergency vouchers showcasing the collective commitment to restoring stability to vulnerable families. The collaboration across governmental and nonprofit sectors from city to state levels exemplified unity in action, transcending differences for the greater good. Witnessing this solidarity unfold was a source of immense pride for APM and all involved. I personally had my father over there in Puerto Rico when Hurricane Maria hit, didn't hear from him for 10 days, lost my grandmother over there, so it's great to see that Councilwoman Lozada is presenting this and honoring people who have fought for relief efforts for Puerto Rico. So thanks so much for hearing us today. On behalf of Nilda Ruiz, APM president, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Rafael Alvarez Fabo, then Reverend Ruben Ortiz, and Reverend Dr. Munder Isaac.
Good morning, Mr. President and members of city council. My name is Rafael Alvarez Fabo. I am the vice president for advocacy and community development for Esperanza. This is my first time addressing this body after working here on and off since 2008, what is colloquially known as the last day of school for many council members and staff and honored guests. I'm here to speak about Councilmember Lozada's resolution honoring, recognizing the humanitarian efforts of the Puerto Rican community who rallied to protect family, friends, and the island of Puerto Rico during cataclysmic hurricanes, earthquakes, and any major disasters that strike. In the wake of Hurricanes Irma and Maria, the Puerto Rican community of Philadelphia and across the country rallied to help the nearly 3.5 million people on the archipelago impacted by these climate disasters. This is a climate resolution, very important. These hurricanes were some of the most costlyest natural disasters in history, damaging more than $90 billion worth of property and infrastructure. This is 15 times more than Philadelphia's annual operating budget, just to put that into perspective. But worse was the humanitarian toll. There were 4,645 people who died. Many died waiting for medical attention. They died gasping for air as their oxygen tanks ran out. Excuse me, did not expect that. This is important stuff, guys. They died from hunger and lack of basic medical care. You guys know me, I don't do this, so I really, really apologize. Puerto Rico's lush vegetation was completely stripped, leaving the island almost unrecognizable. Seeing this tragedy unfold and the callous and unforgivable lack of response from the Trump administration, the Puerto Rican people sprung into action. Everyone added to the collection efforts, from the humblest can of soup to larger donations of generators, supplies, and funds. Councilwoman Lozada went to Puerto Rico two weeks after this tragedy. I know she's very humble, and she won't talk about it, but she was feeding people. She was there surveying the damage. She was there part of the initial response from the Salvation Army. Reverend Bonnie Carmado, who you guys know was helping organize that. Here in Philadelphia, under the leadership of many community organizations and my former, and my mentor, former councilwoman Maria Quinones Sanchez, we started Unidos Para Puerto Rico, a means to collect resources and funds to distribute those to the most, people most in need in Puerto Rico. This organization collected thousands of dollars and helped countless people who could not rely on their federal government to meet these needs. As outlined in this resolution, these climate events are forecasted to become more frequent and stronger. Just last night, Puerto Rico's inadequate power grid, led by a for-profit, not people, company, left nearly 350,000 people without electricity. Not a raindrop, not wind, nothing. A regular day in Puerto Rico under a heat wave, 350,000 Americans are without power. The advocacy for sustainable and thriving Puerto Rico must continue, and I am certain we are ready to lead that change. Thank you.
Thank you.
Reverend Ruben Ortiz, then Reverend Dr. Munder Isaac, and Phyllis Coppinger.
Good morning.
Excuse me one second, sir. Counsel will be at ease while Councilman Jones is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm requesting leave of absence to do business outside the building. But before I go, I'd like to put on the record an official apology to the deputy majority whip, Ms. Cindy Bass, member, and I hope still friend. Thank you.
Mr. Jones, would you like to be recorded voting aye on all bills and resolutions?
Yes, Mr. President. Thank you.
You're welcome. Noted. Go ahead, sir.
Good morning, Council President Kenyala Johnson, Councilwoman Ketsi Lozada, who is introducing this resolution that I'm supporting, and all city council members in this beautiful city of Philadelphia. I am Reverend Ruben Ortiz, a Puerto Rican born and raised here in Philadelphia. I serve as executive director of Hispanic clergy of Philadelphia in vicinity. I am here to express Hispanic clergy's support of the resolution to honor and recognize the humanitarian efforts of the Puerto Rican community, particularly during major disasters such as hurricanes and earthquakes. I spent my entire childhood, my teenage and adult years here. I was educated through our public school system, attended college and seminary here in Philadelphia as well. My parents were very intentional about raising me and my nine siblings in a righteous way. They spoke Spanish at home, raised us in Spanish-speaking churches, and did their best to integrate us into the rest of American culture. They would also send us to Puerto Rico during the summers, where I met my cousins, aunts, and uncles, some of whom worked for companies such as Hanes Clothing and AT&amp;T, and some were military veterans. Although being exposed to El Campo or the country, meaning the farmland, was not familiar to me as a city boy, the trips were formative to my identity, my culture, and my people. Over many trips as a child and later as an adult, I learned that if they had their true desires fulfilled, they would rather earn living at their homeland, whether in the campo or in the pueblo, a city, to earn a living, raise families, and contribute to the community and to our country. I continue to visit Puerto Rico almost every year and sometimes several times a year. My adult children, although they are third generation, they love the island, they enjoy time with family, the people, and as they would say, the vibe. The stories, this story is reflective and very similar to tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands, of other Puerto Ricans across the United States of America. I'm going to close all these statements just to say, to support, we're in support of this resolution, not only on behalf of our fellow citizens on the island, but also needs to happen for the sake of our own integrity here in Philadelphia as the founding city of the United States of America. We must honor, recognize the people of faith who prayed for the well-being of Puerto Rico in Puerto Rico, and also honor, recognize those who continue to pray and those who to this day are still supporting the recovery efforts of Puerto Rico. Thank you, and God bless you.
Reverend Dr. Munder Isaac, then Phyllis Coppinger, and Deana Portnoy.
Honorable council members, my name is Mundris Haak, and I am a Palestinian pastor and theologian. I bring you greetings from Bethlehem, the real one, not the one in Pennsylvania, the birthplace of Jesus Christ. I am truly honored to be here. I have a special affinity to the city of Philadelphia, having attended seminary here in the early 2000s. And I'm proud to say that I am the biggest Eagles fan in Palestine. I am truly honored to be here. I'm truly honored by the resolution for my recognition. I wish it was in different circumstances, to be honest. I wish I was not here. I wish I was not in the United States to advocate for a ceasefire in Gaza, to stop the genocide in Gaza. So the acknowledgement is not for me, but should be for the people of Gaza, for the people of Palestine. And I'm particularly grateful for the resolution to honor the work aid workers of Gaza, many of whom sacrificed their lives to save lives. In fact, some were killed in torture. They work across the hour, nonstop. They are the ones who deserve our recognition. The Bible speaks of them. The world is not worthy of them. Council members, it is hell on earth in Gaza, literally. A genocide has been normalized. I ask, how is the world okay with the killing of 15,000 children and the orphaning of 17,000 children? We need moral courage to stop this madness, and this is how we honor those workers. In Christmas, I said Gaza has become a moral compass to our world. So it is a moral and ethical obligation to stop this war, which came after 16 years of brutal siege, let's not forget. The streets have spoken. Many people of faith have spoken. The students have spoken. And it is time decision-makers act with moral integrity. Your support to bringing an end to this is appreciated, and I know I am a guest, but please accept my candid remark. I am aware that the city council granted $24 million from federal tax money to Israel. This is money that is used for war and revenge. This is not how we honor those heroes of Gaza, the aid workers. And let us be clear, what is happening in Gaza is a vengeance campaign. War crimes are taking place, and we are all accountable before God for how we spend and invest our talents. Honorable city members, invest in peace, not apartheid. Invest in people, education, and transformation, not in war and segregation. This is how you can actually contribute to peace and justice. This is how sympathy and empathy translates into active, effective solidarity. So thank you again for this recognition. Thank you for particularly recognizing the aid workers serving the least of these, as Jesus said. And I want to conclude with the words of Nynsel Mandela, who, recognizing that South Africa and Palestine are facing the same ideology of apartheid, declared, "South Africans won't be free until Palestinians are free." Thank you, and God bless you.
Phyllis Coppinger.
The chair, council will be at ease. The chair recognizes Councilman Isaiah Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. I apologize, but I have to tend to other council business. I would like to be recorded as aye on all bills, resolutions, as well as amendments that we'll be voting on today. Thank you, Council President.
Granted is leave, thank, grant, leave is granted. Thank you very much. Thank you, Phyllis. Just go ahead and begin your.
So good afternoon, council. First and foremost, I want to thank Councilman Anthony Phillips for finally hearing the concerns of the residents on my block. I live in Oxford Circle. I've lived in Philadelphia my whole entire life and raised my three kids here. I've lived on Marcellus Street for 30 years. For 20 of those 30 years, I've had to look at this tree that is in front. Thank you, Councilman, for making these pictures available. These encroaching trees are destroying properties, and I'm here today. I had this all written because Councilman's office did it for me, but I'm going to speak out of this, right? Because some of you are familiar. I have worked with Councilwoman Tasco. I have worked with Councilwoman Parker. And the only person who moved forward was Councilman Anthony Phillips, okay? And I'm very grateful, and as are all my neighbors. When this tree falls, there will be property damage. People will be hurt or killed. And guess who will be standing out there saying, "I have asked for help. I will be there," right? Many of you, I'd like to believe, are my friends. I'm active in the community. I work for an elected official. I'm a committee woman. I am passionate about my community, and I'm just imploring to like move forward. Let me get the bill number. Hold on. 240371 regarding encroaching trees. And again, I want to thank Councilman Phillips and all the other council members who gave me their number, and I reached out to them, and I asked for their support. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Deana Portnoy, Catrice Chacon, and Sam Koutab also make their way to the podium.
Good morning. My name is Deana Portnoy, and I'm a retired Philadelphia school district teacher living in Germantown. But today I've come to talk about the importance of the Palestine, Gaza, Israel issue and the resolutions that are before you. As a Jewish American, I have been grieving ever since the initial events of October 7th. And over these many months, as the war goes on, my grief continues, especially as the destruction of Gaza and its inhabitants is done in my name with my and your tax dollars. I really believe that we are all connected in our humanity, or should be, and that city council can and should take a stand on this issue. I believe we all need to pay attention to it, including in classrooms, where as a retired teacher, I feel it's so important to encourage young people to have open and civil discourse about some of the most important and difficult questions. But I have a very particular story to tell, and from that story, I hope, will emerge some hope and some promise and some understanding. In August 1948, my mother and father and their new baby, me, traveled to the new country of Israel established in May of 1948. My parents met in My parents met in the '30s, responding then and later to the antisemitism that propelled the Holocaust and looking for a Jewish home, though they were secular and did not actually believe in a Jewish state. They married when my father returned from fighting fascism in Europe, and we settled in Kibbutz Sasa in the north of Israel. But I now know that this kibbutz replaced a Palestinian village, also named Sasa. I realized this and took my mother back in 2011, where she said for the first time, "I'm not sure we should have done this." Before we got there, that village was viciously attacked. It had been a village that was started in 1596. That, I think, is the background, or some of the background, of this, of the current events and the catastrophe that continues in Gaza and in the West Bank. And it's why I think it's important for us all to take a stand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Catrice, Catrice Chacon, Sam Koutab, then Lisa Sharon Harper.
Hi, can you hear me? My name is Catrice Cheaton. I'm a spiritual advocate here, born and raised in Philadelphia, along my brother. I'm here about 240604 regarding the Office of Homeland Services and contracted service riders trying to collect pregnancy status data at intake. Me and my brother have been on house for about a year and a half now, off and on. We went into the shelter system. It was quite traumatic. We had to exit for our own safety and well-being, and data was used that we gave them in ways that were not conducive to helping us get a home for ourselves. It was very abusively used. So I'm quite concerned when you want to collect data on women, and particularly respecting babies in that type of environment. It's a quite traumatic, strike-stressful environment, very underfunded, and I'm going to go here. I'm a person of God, and many of the staff, they are people evil. They, they may be prayers to Satan, other entities that are of not, of God or the light. So if we come into contact with them, I don't feel comfortable with any type of resolution that will allow a pregnant woman to have to tell, or a person that's pregnant have to tell, that they're pregnant in those type of circumstances in that environment, was not safe spiritually or physically for most people in that environment. That's been my lived experience, and my brother's. So I oppose that resolution.
Sam Koutab. Can Lisa Sharon Harper, Shane Claiborne, and Sharif Ahmed also make their way to the podium?
Sam Koutab had to go, and Shane Claiborne is no longer here. I'm Lisa Sharon Harper. I'm the president and founder of Freedom Road. I am here to support the resolutions, being introduced today to support aid workers in Gaza and to support the resolution to recognize the life and legacy of Reverend Dr. Munder Isak. The honorable Kenyatta Johnson and honorable council members, as of April 30th, the UN reported that 254 aid workers had been killed in Gaza since October 7th, 2023. According to the Human Rights Watch, Israeli forces have carried out at least eight strikes on aid workers, convoys, and premises in Gaza since October 2023, even though those aid groups had provided their coordinates to the Israeli authorities to ensure their own protection. This is a direct breach of international war law, international laws of war, which prohibit the targeting of aid workers. Those same laws prohibited the targeting of homes. They prohibit the targeting of hospitals. They prohibit the targeting of sources of sustenance like food and water and electricity. And all of these laws of war have been breached since day two of the conflict in Gaza, furthering the increased need and valor of these aid workers, working within the context of Gaza and the West Bank. We are the city of brotherly love. We are the city of sisterly affection. We are the birthplace of democracy, the sacred system of governance that recognizes the inherent dignity of all human beings within its jurisdiction, including the 10,000 Palestinians who live within this jurisdiction, who have family members and friends, who have died at the hands of this lawless crisis in Gaza and the West Bank. Faithfulness to our own heritage demands that we stand in the gap for those aid workers in Gaza, the front line of democracy in a lawless conflict that the UN, the International Court of Justice, and every single reputable humanitarian agency operating in Gaza has recognized as a plausible genocide. Likewise, faithfulness to our heritage as the birthplace of democracy would lead us to recognize and champion the life and legacy of theologian and educator Reverend Dr. Munder Isak, a champion of true democracy in Palestine and Israel. Amen.
Sharif, Sharif Ahmed. Can Nikki Grant and Obona Hagens also make their way to the podium?
Assalamualaikum. Peace be upon you all. I'm going to talk about the bill that is to recognize the Palestinian aid worker. First, I want to say a few things. Over 100 cities throughout the United States recognize ceasefire bill, but what's going on with this city hall here? The man in charge of this city hall is quiet. He's an African-American. African-American brothers and sisters was genocide 400 years, and they're still suffering from that. But guess what? He's not saying a word. What are we afraid of, sir? If you need money, go to Kensington. Do not sell the Philadelphia, and this is the birthplace of freedom. Stop this nonsense. These people here, the council member, we've been speaking to them for nine months. They said they're afraid of you.
Could you stay focused on your message, sir? You have an opportunity to speak on the bill and the aids. So talk about supporting the aid workers in Palestine.
Yes, you're not letting us speak, you see? Every time you want to speak, it's all about you. People are afraid of you. Can you address that?
No one's afraid of me, sir.
People does not need to be afraid of anybody.
I'm going to ask you one more time, or I'm going to cut your time on period. So you want to speak on the bill or not?
I am talking.
Are you, either you want to speak on the bill or you're not?
I'm talking about the bills. If you only stay quiet, I can.
Say something else. If you want to speak on the bill or you're not?
I am talking about the bill.
All right, stick with the bill.
Okay, so one more thing. We have, we're going to go back to the genocide, okay? Because that's what's going on in Palestine. There was a genocide in Bangladesh, 1971. Sister Nina Ahmad, her family was victim of it, and she herself, being a Bengali, does not recognize the Palestinian ceasefire, does not even mention the word ceasefire. So shame on her!
Next speaker, Liz.
Nikki Grant. May Obona Hagens and Reverend Bonnie Camarda also make their way to the podium.
I just want to remind, oh, Obona Hagens, unseated council president, fourth generation, chattel slavery survivor. I want to just remind everybody who's speaking up for everybody else, you've got to stand up for the American freedmen who saved this nation to make it possible for you to come here in the first place. I am in favor of naming Allegheny Avenue between 25th and 26th Street, Cut Master Butterway. But, I'm sorry, Councilman Jones left, I would be very careful of honoring entertainers. Case in point, the city of Philadelphia gave Jay-Z keys to the city when accommodating his Made in America festival. And now the same person.
Mr. Obama Hagens, excuse me, sir. The bill you're speaking on, 240180. Slow down. Amending code to reapportion real estate taxes, that's the actual bill that you're reading on.
Right, but what I'm saying is that they got it wrong. I'm speaking about the changing of the.
Street renaming?
Yes.
Proceed, sir.
Counsel President, you see what I'm talking about, and you know that it's on the bill, so you can obviously see that I'm switching what I'm talking about. And now the same person has come back to bite the hand that feeds them, talking about Jay-Z. This is what happens when you invest in social climbers and not freedom fighters. A man who rapped about doing anything to reach billionaire status has the city council wondering, how could he be so heartless and undermine the education of the poor? When people tell you who they are, you better believe them. What is also strange is that the same people who refuse to address my structural racism bill 2024, after months of me lobbying and presenting bills and referendums, the same people went to Harrisburg to ask for assistance in stopping Jay-Z and Jeff Yass from destroying the public school system. But you never stood up for structural racism. You never stood up for the bill that would eliminate a Jeff Yass and a Jay-Z. So what's the deal, council? See, the problem is, you're under the Monahan report. Ignore the Negro and pay attention to the immigrants. And that's what this whole council session was about, ignoring the American freedmen and paying attention to the people who needed us to save this country, to even be able to come here and speak. And Council President, you ought to be ashamed.
Thank you, sir. Could the next person proceed?
Reverend Bonnie.
Public comment, please.
Reverend Bonnie Camarda. May Robert Previti, Jeremy Blattstein, and Ahmad Ibrahim also make their way to the podium.
Good afternoon, council members. I'm here to support the resolution of honoring and recognizing the humanitarian effort of the Puerto Rican community in the city of Philadelphia. I know that two of the colleagues has spoken, then I'm not going to take most of your time, but I want to tell you that the city of Philadelphia rallied on their Unidos para Puerto Rico, where Quetzic Ochea part of that, and Councilman Lozada was two weeks in Puerto Rico, sleeping in a bunk to help all the communities in Puerto Rico. Then if we, the humanitarian effort that came from Philadelphia to the island of Puerto Rico was amazing. Dollar by dollar, we were able to send over $350,000 to help the people in Puerto Rico. And when I give, you know, I want to be councilman, councilwoman, you were amazing. Another person in this place, that is Mr. Bill Ryan from Einstein, who went with us, and he's there, Bill, went with us into Puerto Rico with councilwoman and I, and drove the crazy women around little towns that didn't have a road to deliver the supply that the people need. Thank you, councilwomen.
Thank you, Reverend Bonnie.
Robert Previti, Jeremy Blattstein, Ahmad Ibrahim, and Mary Beth Brownlee.
Bob, you can begin your public comment.
Thank you very much, Council President. I'm Robert Previti of the Save the Train Coalition, and I'd like to introduce our friends here, but I'm going to start with Joanne Winter.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Joanne Winter, and I am the Executive Director of West Mountain Airing Neighbors and the Campaign Manager for the Save the Train Coalition. I'm joined today by my friends and representatives of the Chestnut Hill Community Association, Chestnut Hill Conservancy, East Mountain Airing Neighbors, High Point Cafe, and West Central Germantown Neighbors, just a few of our many partners. Thank you, Councilwoman Bass, so much for recognizing the efforts of this outstanding coalition. In January, we began hearing rumblings that the Chestnut Hill West Line was in danger of being cut, along with significant cuts to the Chestnut Hill East Line and the 23 bus. Over the past several months, we have formed a coalition of 70 Northwest organizations, including RCOs, Houses of Worship, developers, environmental groups, educational institutions, small businesses, as well as nine elected officials. This effort represents an unprecedented level of collaboration, and we look forward to continuing to work together on this and future issues that are critical to our community. We understand from our legislators in Harrisburg that we need to keep up this intense level of pressure, and so we're also here today to rally for more support, not only for public transit across the Northwest, but across the city. We want to be sure to not only save the train, but secure full funding for SEPTA. If we have a couple more, we have a few more remarks from some of our team members.
Hi, thank you, Cindy Bass, you're a wonderful person, and President Kenyatta, for allowing us to come today. I just want to speak about my personal experience today because I missed the train to come down with my comrades. And if the schedule was back to where it was, I could have waited for about 20 minutes and got down here on time. But instead, I had to go drive in horrific traffic to come down here and park in the underground garage to pay, I don't know how much, for the day. However, I want you to think about that we do not connect the dots when we pass bills and we support different situations. We passed bills to support development around public transportation, but now that same public transportation is in jeopardy. And now we have our mayor mandating people to come back into the city to work, and we already have horrific traffic jams now. What will it be like in September if we do not support public transportation, increase the scheduling, and make this a mobile and moving, prosperous, progressive city? Thank you.
Thank you.
When I heard that, my name is Suzanne Ponson. I'm president of West Central Germantown Neighbors. When I heard in January that the Chestnut Hill West and 23 and the Chestnut Hill East Lines were going to face severe cuts and probably closure, I, I made the point of gathering our neighbors together, creating a coalition, which Jo mentioned some of the people that are involved in that organization. We, we just want to ensure that we have safe, reliable, public transportation for the whole city. We started out with those saving the train, but our goal is saving SEPTA and make us into a 21st century public transportation system. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to be really, really quick. My name is Ann Mcniff.
You got to be super brief, because only one person signed up to speak, ma'am.
My name is Ann Mcniff, and I'm the Executive Director of the Chestnut Hill Community Association, along with my other civic organizations here with us today from Chestnut Hill. I want to thank Councilwoman Bass and let everyone know that we look forward to working with the city council going forward to make sure that public transportation is what it should be here in Philadelphia.
Thank you for your advocacy.
Jeremy Blattstein. May Ahmad Ibrahim, Mary Beth Brownlee, and Khalif Alexander also make their way to the podium.
Good afternoon. Two weeks in a row, City Council President Johnson.
My batting average is still pretty.
I know, I know, but hey, it's still better than your predecessor, so first off, I would like to say, job well done. I think for the first six months of this year, you've done a very good job of overseeing this council, so thank you. I am Jeremy Blattstein. Some of you may know me from my Twitter account, Next Philly Mayor. Unfortunately, my videos aren't as fire as Council President Johnson's videos. But today you're voting to confirm seven members to the zoning board of adjustments. On May 24th, 2024, the Commonwealth Court ruled that city council did not have standing appealing a ZBA ruling. Do not waste taxpayer dollars appealing ZBA rulings or figuring out whether or not this body even has standing. It's broken. It's broken. Do not waste taxpayer dollars appealing ZBA rulings or figuring out whether or not this body even has standings to appeal ZBA rulings. Please appoint people that you trust, trust them to do their jobs, and allow the ZBA to operate as it's intended. Additionally, regarding the homestead exemption, there was a lot of discussion regarding the ending the tenure tax payment a couple years ago. That was going to bring an additional $120 million to the Philadelphia School District over 10 years. That just got wiped out times two, right? The increase of the homestead exemption is a unnecessary tax cut that applies to every single homeowner. The last piece I will say, and I really want to make this clear, is thank you for introducing the aid worker bill today, Councilmember O'Rourke, honoring the aid workers who are helping the people recover from the horrific attacks of October 7th. Hamas still has over 100 hostages. The aid workers who are...
Excuse me, ma'am, could he be respected and give his time, just like everybody else that's speaking on this topic is coming to give me their time? Go ahead, sir.
I am speaking on, I am speaking on the... I am using the words of the bill that was introduced today by Councilmember O'Rourke, honoring the aid workers. So thank you. Thank you very much. And I would like to make it clear that I believe in a ceasefire now. Bring them home, bring the hostages home. There is a ceasefire now agreement on the table that Hamas is refusing to accept. So I would like this to make it clear, as we move forward, that this is a very nuanced topic, and this body should not be addressing it. It is a topic that is, that should be addressed on the national level, and this is the type of thing that we can't have the conversation. But thank you, Council President Johnson, for allowing me to have the time to understand this, but this is...
Excuse me, ma'am. Excuse me, ma'am. Excuse me, ma'am. All right, so at this point in time, Sergeant Arms, if anyone decided to scrub moving forward, I'm going to ask you to remove them. It's real simple. The next person, come on up, Ahmad.
Ahmad Ibrahim, may Mary Beth Brownlee, Khalif Alexander, and Michael Gibson also make their way to the podium.
In the name of God, the most compassionate, the most merciful, the God of justice, God of peace, God of love, I'm here, first of all, I want to thank Councilman Nicholas O'Rourke for introducing this resolution, and I also want to thank him for honoring my great hero, Reverend Dr. Isaac Munther. He is the epitome of what heroism is, so I thank you for that. I'm here as a healthcare worker. I am from West Philadelphia, and I just want to recognize this resolution, and I want, again, I want to thank everyone who's going to support this resolution. As a healthcare worker, I could only imagine putting myself in the shoes of those healthcare workers who have sacrificed their lives so that others can live. I could not have done so. As a healthcare worker, I could not have made that sacrifice. Those are the heroes, and we are here to recognize them. And I just want to highlight the numbers of healthcare workers that have been killed by the apartheid settler colonial murderous genocidal regime. For more than 500, imagine the numbers, 500 healthcare workers that have been killed. More than 258 workers have been killed indiscriminately, and this is happening in front of our very eyes, and we are choosing to remain silent. For what? Because we're afraid of the lobbyists? We're afraid of the big money donors? That we cannot speak to save lives? At the end, I want to say shame on all the city council members. We know who you are. We know who you serve. We want to say shame on you for failing to formulate, adopt, and pass a resolution for ceasefire, a minimum ceasefire, so that lives can be saved, the children's life can be saved. I am a father of two children.
Mary Beth Brownlee.
Would the clerk please call the next person for public comment?
Mary Beth Brownlee, Khalif Alexander, Michael Gibson, then Nadira Griffin.
Cool. It's on? Y'all got me? Cool. So, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Khalif Alexander, and I am here to speak on the bill 240494, and I'm actually in support of this bill. In fact, I believe that it is important for the city of Philadelphia to apply and to rebuild the city in better conditions for our citizens. In fact, the city of Philadelphia is one of those cities that have had many great leaders and citizens, such as Absalom Jones, Richard Allen, Octavius Cato, Sadi Alexander, Leon Sullivan, Cecil B. Moore, and many more. Now, the question you may ask is, why am I saying these individuals' names? Because these individuals are what we call American Negro, American Freedman, Black American, various things of that nature. Now, the city of Philadelphia was historically built by Black Americans, and this weekend is Juneteenth weekend, and next week is Juneteenth. I have not heard anything about Juneteenth, this entire city council meeting, since I've been here, which I find not only disrespectful, but I'm also disappointed in many of you all. Now, with that being said, I'm requesting that, you know, city councils begin to look at various different things. Shout out to Councilwoman Gotti, by the way, for setting up the Reparations Task Force. You know, we appreciate you for that. And moving forward with the Reparations Task Force, one of the things that we're looking to do is to create an Office for Freedman Affairs, remnant of what we had during the Reconstruction Era. Now, why am I connecting these pieces like this? Because Juneteenth was our Emancipation Day, which is our Freedom Day, which is our Independence Day. And with that being said, the first thing that we wanted to get out of emancipation was economic sovereignty, economic opportunity. We do not have proper economic opportunity, not only in this city or not only in this state, but in this country as Black Americans. And I'm up here demanding that we look into creating this office immediately. Now, last thing, if you are a descendant of slave, your folks come from the South, can you raise your hand for me? You raise your hand if you are a descendant of slave, your people was emancipated in 1870. We got, we got a lot of, we got a lot of our people in here, right? So that's what we need to stand on. We need to stand on that, and we need to stand on economic opportunity and advancement for Black Americans. My name is Khalif Alexander, and I thank you very much. Also, real quick before I leave, make sure y'all come out to Juneteenth this weekend in the Southwest.
Michael Gibson, Nadira Griffin, can Salaam Muhammad and Yvette Young also make their way to the podium?
Hello, everyone. My name is Michael Gibson. I'm a 74-year disabled senior, and I lived in Philadelphia for just about all my life. I'm here today because I want to address that resolution that the new Councilman Young wanted to welcome him, and that I'm in favor of that naming that part of Cecil B. Moore, that resolution of College Avenue between College Avenue and Ridge Avenue as Freedom Fighters Way. I'm kind of like a freedom fighter, because I'm here, and I represent people of color in this city, and there has been a lot of racial discrimination and abuse of power by the Philadelphia Police Department and Police Internal Affairs. Recently, I was just assaulted in the 22nd Police District for exerting my right to file a criminal complaint. I wake up in pain every day, every morning, when I go to sleep, and when I wake up in the morning. This has to be addressed. The new mayor, Cheryl Parker, needs to know about this. The District Attorney, Crasner, needs to know about this. I had the evidence, and the Internal Affairs stated that they don't have the video, and they did have the video. Being a person that's fighting for your freedoms and fighting for your rights, people of color should not have to go through this. Not, not, not in 2024. We should still have to stand up and fight for our rights this way. I'm now in federal court, and now District Attorney Brett Secoaston is saying that he's going to dispute everything I said after I turn it over to the DA's office, but yet and still, he's refusing, and I know DA Crasner doesn't have that information, and I'm going to make sure he gets it. They're trying all they can do to stop me from testifying, and I'm not going to bite my tongue this time. I'm going to tell everything about all the corruption and all the systemic discrimination in different agencies in the city of Philadelphia. There has been attorneys that sabotaged the complaint, and they did so deliberately to keep me from testifying. I have been assaulted, attacked, and intimidated to keep me from testifying in a court of law, and I'm going to do that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
Have a good day.
You're welcome.
Salaam Muhammad and Yvette Young, Nadira Griffin.
Good afternoon, councilmen and women. My name is Nadira Griffin. I am the Philadelphia Ambassador for all 10 council dematic districts. On behalf of the people, I speak on ordinance 240332. We are in support of the bill. This is a urban, for urban development, what we want in our communities, there are, in our urban communities, we know that our nanas and our papas, our abuelas and abuelos, our titties, madres, padres, mothers and fathers, we kept Philadelphia up, especially in the 5th council matic district, where we melanated, original kings and queens kept Philadelphia up. And we know that the urban communities, we are the foundation of Philadelphia. We spend the most money, and we keep Philadelphia up. So what we need in Philadelphia, at the Strawberry Shopping Center, right over there on Girard Avenue, in the 20, right there, 26th and 27th and Girard Avenue, on Germantown and Lehigh, we have Foodway and Integrity Meat Market. We have Shopping Bag, right there on Girard Avenue, around the 2600. Shopping, we, we have over there in Strawberry, Strawberry Shopping Center, we have old food that's outdated, obsolete buildings, obscure regentrification. We know that our grandmothers and pops kept Philadelphia up in these stores. So what we want is a grocery store that our grandparents can go to. We want stores that depict us and foods that depict us with good dated food that keeps us having a quality of life. And we also want to make sure that when you have these urban developments, that you keep our mom and pop and our, our mom and pop stores, because these are the stores where we went and everybody knew our names. When we were short on, when we're short on funds, we can actually go there and get, we can actually go there and get credit, where we can sustain our families until we have enough money. So what we want in our communities is grocery stores that depict us and depict the foods that we have, quality food, just like you have in the suburbs. Thank you.
Salaam Muhammad and Yvette Young.
Yvette Young. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm speaking on Resolution 240598. My last year working at the school district of Philadelphia as the Assistant Director of Facilities, we closed 27 schools, and that year was full of empty seats, hysteria, and rightsizing messaging that was very damaging to the school district. Dozens of schools were closed without adding counselors or nurses, with no regard to the merging of students from different neighborhoods, without considering the impact to different neighborhoods and the businesses that were supported by the students and the faculty at those schools, which decimated a lot of communities. Class sizes went from an average of 22 to 25, to even beyond 32, which is what it's supposed to be, and beyond. So basically, now there are a lot of overcrowded classes because they closed too many schools. Many displaced students were placed into low-achieving schools without any resources being added or any consideration for the added burden of traveling longer distances to get to school. Displaced students had more absences and received more suspensions after their original schools closed. Studies have found that the farther students had to travel to reach their new schools, the more they struggled. One of the key lessons that is concentrating disadvantage into the same school is not good for any student. That quote was made by Matthew Steinberg in a 2019 article by Avi Wolfman Arant. After 10 years of deferred maintenance at the school district and over $7 billion in incomplete capital projects and improvements, Philadelphia schools have been left in dangerous conditions, full of asbestos and lead. Many of our students are suffering from lead exposure, and they have gone untested and untreated, which is a shame. Before we take public dollars to go to private schools and stadiums, we have to address structural racism, reverse structural racism, and invest into our neighborhood schools. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Council President, there are no further names for public comment.
Thank you. We will now consider today's resolution consent agenda. Counsel will be at ease for a second. Majority Leader, may I speak for a second? I will ask the clerk to read the titles of all the resolutions on the consent agenda. After each title is read, any member may object to the inclusion of the resolution on the consent agenda. Upon such an objection, and without debate, the resolution will be immediately removed from the consent agenda and placed in our regular final passes calendar. The clerk will now read the titles of the resolutions on the consent agenda.
Resolution 240168, a resolution appointing Madison McCarron to the Board of Directors of the City Avenue Special Services District of Philadelphia Lower Merion. Resolution 240487, a resolution appointing Carrie Fowler Bender to the Board of Directors for Old City Special Services District. 240535, a resolution confirming the appointment of Michael Johns to serve on the zoning board of adjustment. 240536, a resolution confirming the appointment of Tia Nguyen to serve on the zoning board of adjustment. 240537, a resolution confirming the appointment of Tenetta Graham to serve on the zoning board of adjustment. 240538, a resolution confirming the reappointment of James Snell to serve on the zoning board of adjustment. 240539, resolution confirming the reappointment of William Bergman to serve on the zoning board of adjustment. 240540, a resolution confirming the reappointment of Ismail Shaheed to serve on the zoning board of adjustment. 240541, a resolution confirming the appointment of Cheryl Gatton to serve on the zoning board of adjustment. 240552, a resolution appointing Brianna Wilkins to the Board of Directors for the Old City Special Services District. 240584, a resolution confirming the appointment of Tumor Alexander as Regional Trustee for the city of Philadelphia in connection with the Pennsylvania Opioid Misuse and Addiction Abatement Trust. 240585, a resolution authorizing the council president to initiate appeals by city council of decisions of the zoning board of adjustment and certain circumstances, and to retain legal counsel in connection with such appeals. Resolution 240586, a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to modify the development plans previously approved by council resolutions 220757, 220823, and 2230503, and memorialized in a purchase and development agreement between the Land Bank and West Noma Revitalization Group to include only one renovated property located at 4041 Cambridge Street in the 3rd Councilmatic District, and to permit West Noma Revitalization Group to return the properties located at 759, 761, 763, 773, and 783 Palace Street in the 3rd Councilmatic District to the Philadelphia Land Bank in accordance with the terms of Chapter 16-700 of the Philadelphia Code. And Resolution 240589, a resolution naming West Allegheny Avenue between 25th and 26th Streets as Thomas Cut Master Butter Muldro Way, in honor of the life and legacy of WDAS radio personality, Thomas Cut Master Butter Muldro. 240594, a resolution also naming Master Street between Broad Street and Carlisle Street as Erica Alexander Way. And 240595, a resolution naming N. College Avenue... And 240-595, a resolution naming N. College Avenue between West College Avenue and Ridge Avenue as Freedom Fighters Way. And 240-602, a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank deeds conveying title to various properties located in the eighth Council Matic District, including on the following streets, Wakefield Street, Column Street, and East Wister Street pursuant to the requirements of the Commonwealth Land Bank.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Gilmore Richardson for a motion to adopt each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda.
It has been moved and properly seconded that each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda has been adopted. We will now consider today's bill consent agenda. I will ask the clerk to read the titles of all the bills on the consent agenda. After each title is read, any member may object to the inclusion of the bill on the consent agenda. Upon such an objection and without debate, the bill will be, will, will immediately be removed from the consent agenda and placed on our record, regular second reading and final passage calendars. The clerk will now read the titles of the bills on the consent agenda.
Bill number 240-332, an ordinance approving the Sixth Amendment of the redevelopment proposal for the American Street Industrial Corridor Urban Renewal Area, being the, being the area generally bounded by Lehigh Avenue, Burke Street, and Montgomery Avenue on the north, by Second Street and Phillips Street on the east, by Gerard Avenue, Oxford Street, and Jefferson Street on the south, and by Germantown Avenue, Sixth Street, and Third Street on the west, including the Sixth Amendment to the Urban Renewal Plan, which provides for changes that would make it consistent with the North Philadelphia Redevelopment Area Plan and generally consistent with the most recent comprehensive plan approved by City Planning Commission of the City of Philadelphia. And bill 240-385, an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Snyder Avenue, Sixth Street, Cantrell Street, and Seventh Street. Bill number 240-415, an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Island Avenue, the Delaware Expressway, and Bartram Avenue. Bill number 240-421, an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Valley Avenue, Domino Lane, Ridge Avenue, Paoli Avenue, Peckin Street, Ridge Avenue, Hermit Street, and Henry Avenue, and to amend Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code by adding Section 14-541, Ridge Avenue Neighborhoods Overlay and making other related changes, all under certain terms and conditions. And bill number 240-426, an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Roosevelt Boulevard, Adams Avenue, Ramona Street, Wyoming Avenue, and Whittaker Avenue. Just one minute. And bill number 240-305, an ordinance authorizing encroachments in the nature of a sidewalk cafe in the vicinity of 795 North 24th Street, Philadelphia, PA 19130, under certain terms and conditions. 240-380, an ordinance amending Section 9-213 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Farmers Markets by adding permissible location on South 52nd Street between Pine Street and Osage Avenue, all under certain terms and conditions. Bill number 240-382, an ordinance authorizing the installation, ownership, and maintenance of various encroachments in the vicinity of 4432 Main Street, 4436-42 Main Street, and 4436 R. Main Street, Philadelphia, PA 19127, under certain terms and conditions. Bill number 240-384, an ordinance authorizing encroachments in the nature of a sidewalk cafe in the vicinity of 944 North 2nd Street, Philadelphia, PA 19123, under certain terms and conditions. Bill number 240-418, an ordinance establishing a parking regulation on Addison Street between South 54th Street and South 53rd Street, Baltimore Avenue between South 43rd Street and South 44th Street, Irving Street between 51st Street and South 50th Street, Springfield Avenue between South 51st Street and South 52nd Street, Washington Avenue between South 56th Street and South 57th Street, South 46th Street between Locust Street and Spruce Street, Pine Street between South 62nd Street and South 63rd Street, Melville Street between Spruce Street and Locust Street, and South 54th Street between Greenway Avenue and Woodland Avenue. 240-419, an ordinance establishing a parking regulation on Irving Street between South 59th Street and South 60th Street, South 49th Street between Regent Street and Chester Avenue, South 46th Street between Lynn Moore Avenue and Woodland Avenue, Walnut Street between South 61st Street and South 62nd Street, Webster Street between South 51st Street and South 52nd Street, Sansom Street between South 61st Street and South 62nd Street, Walton Street between South 49th Street and South 50th Street, Locust Street between South 59th Street and South 60th Street, Locust Street between South 49th Street and South 50th Street. 240-420, an ordinance establishing a parking regulation on Ellsworth Street between South 60th Street and South 61st Street, Ruby Street between Springfield Avenue and Chester Avenue, Sansom Street between South 60th Street and South 61st Street, Webster Street between South 60th Street and South 61st Street, Rodman, Rodman Street between South 56th Street and South 57th Street, Willow's Avenue between South 53rd Street and South 45th Street, Cobb's Creek Parkway between Spruce Street and Locust Street, South 52nd Street between Chester Avenue and Springfield Avenue. 240-424, an ordinance amending Section 9-213 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Farmers Markets by adding a permissible location in the fourth district, Container Village, located at 4862-70 Parkside Avenue, Philadelphia, PA 19131. 240-469, an ordinance granting permission to University-City-Urav Corporation in order to demarcate the boundaries of University-City-Urav District, to construct and maintain a clear nylon cord, indoor plastic tubes, and other ancillary facilities, including a maximum of 10 poles along, over, and in certain public rights of way in city streets, and/or to attach such demarcation facilities to existing facilities owned by other entities authorized by other city ordinances subject to such owner's consent, all under certain terms and conditions. 240-473, an ordinance authorizing encroachments in the nature of a sidewalk cafe in the vicinity of 3743 Midville Avenue, Philadelphia, PA 19129, under certain terms and conditions. 240-475, an ordinance amending Chapter 12-900 Parking Regulations and Penalties and Chapter 12-2800 Administrative Adjudication of Parking Violations of the Philadelphia Code to add prohibitions and penalties related to parking certain large vehicles, including boats, motorhomes, housecoaches, house trailers, truck campers, recreational cargo trailers, and recreational trailers, under certain terms and conditions. 240-493, an ordinance authorizing encroachments in the nature of a sidewalk cafe in the vicinity of 1532 Snyder Avenue, Philadelphia, PA 19145, under certain terms and conditions. 240-495, an ordinance authorizing the vacating of Beaumont Street from 51st Street to its terminus southwestward lead therefrom. 240-496, an ordinance authorizing encroachments in the nature of a sidewalk cafe in the vicinity of 6249 Catherine Street, Philadelphia, PA 19143, under certain terms and conditions. 240-497, an ordinance authorizing encroachments in the nature of a sidewalk cafe in the vicinity of 5013 Baltimore Avenue, Philadelphia, PA 19143, under certain terms and conditions. 240-414, an ordinance amending Chapter 9-600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Services and Other Businesses by adding a new section regulating the hours of operation of certain establishments and providing for penalties within an area bounded by Ogon's Avenue between Hayne Street and Shantam Avenue, all under certain terms and conditions. Bill number 240-468, an ordinance amending Chapter 9-600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Services and Other Businesses by adding a new section regulating the hours of operation of certain establishments and providing for penalties within an area bounded by Ogon's Avenue between Hayne Street and 66th Avenue, all under certain terms and conditions. Bill number 240-474, an ordinance amending Chapter 9-600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Services and Other Businesses by adding a new section regulating the hours of operation of certain establishments and providing for penalties within an area bounded by East Allegheny Avenue, Kensington Avenue, Tarssdale Avenue, and Frankfurt Avenue, all under certain terms and conditions. Bill number 240-476, an ordinance amending Chapter 9-600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Service and Other Businesses by adding a new section regulating the hours of operation of certain establishes, establishments, and providing for penalties within the vicinity of an area bounded by North Broad Street, North Park Avenue, and West Chu Avenue, and West Taber Avenue, in the vicinity of Wagner Avenue between North Broad Street and Old York Road, all under certain terms and conditions. Bill number 240-498, an ordinance amending Chapter 9-600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Services and Other Businesses by adding various locations to the section regulating the hours of operation of certain establishments and providing for penalties within those various locations, under certain terms and conditions. Bill number 240-429, an ordinance authorizing the Procurement Commissioner and the Chief Executive Officer of the Department of Aviation on behalf of the City of Philadelphia to enter into an amendment to a concession agreement for the development, operation, and maintenance of an airport advertising program at Philadelphia International Airport, all under certain terms and conditions. And bill 240-433, an ordinance authorizing the Procurement Commissioner on behalf of the city to enter into a lease and concession agreement with Aero Center Northeast Philadelphia LLC, in connection with certain property at Northeast Philadelphia Airport, to facilitate the development and operation of a new fixed base operator, all under certain terms and conditions.
These bills haven't been read on two different days. The question for each bill now is, shall the bill pass finally? The clerk shall call the roll, and upon being called, each councilmember shall vote aye on each of the bills, nay on each of the bills, or indicate those bills for which the member is voting aye, and those bills for which the member is voting nay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas was aye. Councilmember Jones was aye. Councilmember Landau.
Aye.
Councilmember Lasada.
Aye.
Councilmember Young.
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks.
Aye.
Councilmember Harity.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke.
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla.
Aye.
Councilmember Bass.
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad.
Aye.
And councilmember Johnson.
Aye on all bills. A majority of all of the members having voted in the affirmative for each of the bills, the bills on the consent agenda are passed. We will now, hey, we will now consider the bills and resolutions on the regular second reading and final passage calendars. Will the clerk please read the title of resolution number 240-598?
Resolution 240-598, a resolution condemning the use of school voucher programming is harmful to the, to the school district of Philadelphia.
The Chair recognizes Minority Leader Brooks for a motion regarding resolution number 240-598.
Council President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and properly seconded that the resolution 240-598 be adopted. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries, and the resolution is.
To be recorded as voting no on that resolution.
Absolutely. Your vote is recorded. Your vote will be recorded. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of resolution number 240-604?
A resolution calling upon the City of Philadelphia's Office of Homeless Services and its contracted service providers to collect pregnancy status data at intake.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Nina Ma for a motion regarding resolution number 240-604.
Uh, thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of this resolution.
It has been moved and properly seconded that resolution number 240-604 be adopted. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries, and the resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of two, of bill number 240-179?
An ordinance, I'm sorry.
Excuse me one second, Liz. Counsel will be at ease. Councilmember Phillips, would you like to be recognized?
No.
Okay. Will the clerk please read the title of bill number 240-179?
An ordinance adopting the operating budget for fiscal year 2025.
This bill hasn't been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Would the chief clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas was aye. Councilmember Jones was aye. Councilmember Landau.
Aye.
Councilmember Lasada.
Aye.
Councilmember Young.
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks.
Aye.
Councilmember Harity.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke.
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla.
Aye.
Councilmember Bass. Councilmember Ahmad.
Aye.
And Council President Johnson.
Aye. The ayes are 17, and nays are zero. A majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. Will the clerk please read the title of bill number 240-180?
An ordinance amending Chapter 19-1800 of the Philadelphia Code entitled School Tax Authorization to provide for an increase in the tax that the Board of Education of the School District of Philadelphia is authorized to impose on real estate, and amending Chapter 19-1300 entitled Real Estate Taxes to establish an equivalent reduction in the tax rate for the city real estate tax, and making technical changes, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill hasn't been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Would the chief clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas was aye. Councilmember Jones is aye. Councilmember Landau.
Aye.
Councilmember Lasada.
Aye.
Councilmember Young.
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks.
Aye.
Councilmember Harity.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke.
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla.
Aye.
Councilmember Bass.
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad.
Aye.
And Council President Johnson.
Aye. The ayes are 17, and nays are zero. A majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. Will the clerk please read the title of bill number 240-181?
An ordinance to adopt a fiscal 2025 capital budget.
This bill hasn't been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Would the chief clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas was aye. Councilmember Jones was aye. Councilmember Landau.
Aye.
Councilmember Lasada.
Aye.
Councilmember Young.
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks.
Aye.
Councilmember Harity.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke.
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla.
Aye.
Councilmember Bass.
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad.
Aye.
And Council President Johnson.
Aye. The ayes are 17, and nays are zero. A majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. Will the clerk please read the title of bill number 240-182?
An ordinance to adopt a capital program for six fiscal years, 2025 through 2030 inclusive.
This bill hasn't been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Would the chief clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas was aye. Councilmember Young was aye. Councilmember Landau.
Aye.
Councilmember Lasada.
Aye.
Councilmember Young.
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks.
Aye.
Councilmember Harity.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke.
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla.
Aye.
Councilmember Bass.
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad.
Aye.
And Council President Johnson.
Aye. The ayes are 17, and nays are zero. A majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. Will the clerk please read the title of bill number 240-492?
An ordinance amending Section 19-1301.1 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Homestead Exclusion to increase the amount of the homestead exclusion, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill hasn't been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Would the chief clerk call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas was aye. Councilmember Jones was aye. Councilmember Landau.
Aye.
Councilmember Lasada.
Aye.
Councilmember Young.
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks.
Aye.
Councilmember Harity.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke.
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla.
Aye.
Councilmember Bass.
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad. Aye. And council president Johnson?
Aye, the ayes are seventeen and nays are zero, a majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. Would the clerk please read the title of bill number two four zero zero five eight?
An ordinance amending section fourteen dash seven oh two of the Philadelphia Code entitled Floor Area Height and Dwelling Unit Density Bonuses to add requirements related to the use of payments in lieu of building affordable housing to receive floor area, building height, and dwelling unit density bonuses, amending section fourteen dash five three three entitled Mixed Income Neighborhoods Overlay District to add requirements related to the use of payments in lieu of building affordable housing to satisfy minimum affordable housing building requirements, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill hadn't been read on two different days, the question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Would the chief clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas was aye, councilmember Jones was aye, councilmember Landau.
Aye.
Councilmember Lasada.
Aye.
Councilmember Young.
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks.
Aye.
Councilmember Harity.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke.
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla.
Aye.
Councilmember Bass.
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad.
Aye.
And council president Johnson?
Aye, the ayes are seventeen and nays are zero, a majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. Would the clerk please read the title of bill number two four zero? Y'all can clap, go ahead. Would the clerk please read the title of bill number two four zero one five seven?
An ordinance amending title fourteen zoning and planning and title eighteen commerce of the Philadelphia Code to clarify responsibilities of the Department of Aviation and eliminating provisions related to passenger charges, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill hadn't been read on two different days, the question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Would the chief clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas, councilmember Jones was aye, councilmember Landau.
Aye.
Councilmember Lasada.
Aye.
Councilmember Young.
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks.
Aye.
Councilmember Harity.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke.
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla.
Aye.
Councilmember Bass.
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad.
Aye.
And council president Johnson?
Aye, the ayes are seventeen and nays are zero, a majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. Would the clerk please read the title of bill number two four zero three three six?
An ordinance amending title fourteen of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning by Adding Definitions and Creating a New Chestnut Hill Lower East NCO in the area generally bounded by the Septa Chestnut Hill East Line, Cressham Valley Drive, Germantown Avenue, Winston Road, Moreland Avenue, Devon Street, Ardley Street, and Springfield Avenue under certain terms and conditions.
This bill hadn't been read on two different days, the question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Would the chief clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas was aye, councilmember Jones was aye, councilmember Landau.
Aye.
Councilmember Lasada.
Aye.
Councilmember Young.
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks.
Aye.
Councilmember Harity.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke.
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla.
Aye.
Councilmember Bass.
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad. Aye. And council president Johnson?
Aye, the ayes are seventeen and nays are zero, a majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. Would the clerk please read the title of bill number two four zero four six six?
An ordinance amending section fourteen dash three oh three, fourteen of the Philadelphia Code entitled Public Hearings of the Zoning Board of Adjustment to change the number of board members required for a quorum or for action taken at a zoning board of adjustment hearing, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill hadn't been read on two different days, the question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Would the chief clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas was aye, councilmember Jones was aye, councilmember Landau.
Aye.
Councilmember Lasada.
Aye.
Councilmember Young.
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks.
Aye.
Councilmember Harity.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke.
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla.
Aye.
Councilmember Bass.
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad.
Aye.
And council president Johnson?
Aye, the ayes are sixteen, the nays are zero, a majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. Would the chief clerk please read the title of bill number two four zero three seven two?
Two four zero three seven two, an ordinance constituting the twentieth supplemental ordinance to the amended and restated General Airport Revenue Bond Ordinance authorizing the mayor, the city controller, and the city solicitor, or a majority of them, to issue and sell one or more series or subseries of tax exempt or taxable airport revenue bonds or notes of the city of Philadelphia, setting forth the use of the proceeds determining the sufficiency of pledged amounts available for debt service, covenating the payment of interest and principal, authorizing the bond committee to make, to take certain action with regard to the terms and conditions of the airport revenue bonds or notes and related agreements, and the elections under the amended and restated General Airport Revenue Bond Ordinance authorizing the director of finance to take certain actions with regard to the sale of such airport revenue bonds or notes, the investments of the proceeds thereof, and the city's continuing disclosure obligation, and specifying the applicability of sections of the First Class City Revenue Bond Act and the amended and restated General Airport Revenue Bond Ordinance.
This bill hadn't been read on two different days, the question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Would the chief clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas was aye, councilmember Jones was aye, councilmember Landau.
Aye.
Councilmember Lasada.
Aye.
Councilmember Young.
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks.
Aye.
Councilmember Harity.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke.
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla.
Aye.
Councilmember Bass.
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad.
Aye.
And council president Johnson?
Aye, the ayes are sixteen, the nays are zero, a majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. Would the chief clerk please read the title of bill number two four zero three seven three?
An ordinance constituting the sixteenth supplemental ordinance to the General Gas Works Revenue Bond Ordinance of nineteen ninety-eight, authorizing the city of Philadelphia, Pennsylvania to sell either at public or private sale one or more series of gas works revenue bonds and gas works revenue bonds to refund such bonds, to pay the cost of certain capital projects and other project costs, and the cost redeeming the city's gas works revenue capital project commercial paper notes, authorizing the city to amend, novate, or terminate all or any portion of any qualified swap agreement, authorizing the city to obtain credit enhancement for any series of the bonds, making certain determinations and covenants relating to gas works revenues and the payment of interest and principal, and authorizing covenants and actions in order that the bonds shall not be arbitrage bonds, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill hadn't been read on two different days, the question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Would the chief clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas was aye, councilmember Jones was aye, councilmember Landau.
Aye.
Councilmember Lasada.
Aye.
Councilmember Young.
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks.
Aye.
Councilmember Harity.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke.
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla.
Aye.
Councilmember Bass.
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad.
Aye.
And council president Johnson?
Aye, the ayes are sixteen, the nays are zero, a majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. Would the chief clerk please read the title of bill number two four zero three seven four?
An ordinance amending the seventeenth supplemental ordinance to the amended and restated General Airport Revenue Bond Ordinance, bill number one nine zero four three two of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, approved by the mayor on June twenty-six, twenty nineteen, to authorize an increase in the aggregate principal amount of airport revenue bonds or notes to be issued under the seventeenth supplemental ordinance from three hundred fifty million dollars to five hundred million dollars, exclusive of costs of issuance, including underwriter's discount, original issue discount, capitalized interest, funding of deposits to the sinking fund reserve account if necessary and similar items. Further amending said ordinance, bill number one nine zero four three two, to authorize the pledge for security and payment of some or all of the obligations, a lien and security interest in passenger facility charges to the extent available, and authorizing certain other actions.
This bill hadn't been read on two different days, the question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Would the chief clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas was aye, councilmember Jones was aye, councilmember Landau.
Aye.
Councilmember Lasada.
Aye.
Councilmember Young.
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks.
Aye.
Councilmember Harity.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke.
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla.
Aye.
Councilmember Bass.
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad.
Aye.
And council president Johnson?
Aye, the ayes are seventeen and nays are zero, a majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. The chair recognizes councilmember Jim Harity.
Thank you, council president, I'd like to be, uh, mark voting aye on all bills I missed.
Thank you, will be duly noted. Would the clerk please read the title of bill number two four zero three seven five?
An ordinance constituting the nineteenth supplemental ordinance to the amended and restated General Airport Revenue Bond Ordinance, providing for certain amendments to the amended and restated General Airport Revenue Bond Ordinance under certain terms and conditions.
This bill hadn't been read on two different days, the question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Would the chief clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas was aye, councilmember Jones was aye, councilmember Landau.
Aye.
Councilmember Lasada.
Aye.
Councilmember Young.
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks.
Aye.
Councilmember Harity.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke.
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla.
Aye.
Councilmember Bass.
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad.
Aye.
And council president Johnson?
Aye, the ayes are seventeen and nays are zero, a majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. Would the chief clerk please read the title of bill number two four zero three seven six?
An ordinance authorizing an increase in the nonelectoral indebtedness of the city within the Pennsylvania constitutional limit, authorizing the bond committee to sell bonds at public or private negotiated sale, to provide funds towards various capital municipal purposes, providing for appropriations to the sinking fund commission for the payment of such bonds, and authorizing agreements to provide credit or payment or liquidity sources for the bonds in connection with issuance of bonds and certain other actions, and rescinding the authorization set forth in bill number two three zero one eight six dash A, approved September fifteenth, twenty twenty-three.
This bill hadn't been read on two different days, the question now is, shall the bill pass finally? The chief clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas, aye, councilmember Jones was aye, councilmember Landau.
Aye.
Councilmember Lasada.
Aye.
Councilmember Young.
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks.
Aye.
Councilmember Harity.
Aye.[1175.01]
Enter into an amendment agreement with Citizens Bank National Association for Provision of Payroll Banking Services to the city under certain terms and conditions.
This bill having been read on two different days, the question now is, should the bill pass finally? The chief clerk, please call the rule.
Councilmember Phillips?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas was aye, councilmember Jones was aye, councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Lasada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks?
Aye.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Aye.
Councilmember Scola?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And council president Johnson?
Aye, the ayes are seventeen, the nays are zero, majority of all members having voted in affirmative, the bill passes. Would a clerk please read the title of bill number two four zero three seven eight?
An ordinance approving the amendment of fiscal year 2024 capital budget providing for expenditures for the capital purposes of the Philadelphia Gas Works, including the supplying of funds in connection therewith, subject to certain constraints and conditions, and acknowledging the receipt of the revised forecast of capital budgets for fiscal years 2025 through 2029 as amended.
This bill having been read on two different days, the question now is, should the bill pass finally? Would a chief clerk please call the rule?
Councilmember Phillips?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas was aye, councilmember Jones was aye, councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Lasada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks?
Aye.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Aye.
Councilmember Scola?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And council president Johnson?
Aye, the ayes are seventeen, the nays are zero, majority of all members having voted in affirmative, the bill passes. Counsel will be at ease for a second. zero three seven nine?
An ordinance amending Title Seventeen of the Philadelphia Code entitled Contracts and Procurement to modify the requirements for contracts with not-for-profit vendors, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill having been read on two different days, the question now is, should the bill pass finally? Would a chief clerk please call the rule?
Councilmember Phillips?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
The chair recognizes Councilmember Jamie Gaultier.
Thank you, council president. I just wanted to say briefly that this was a tough one for me. I've been hearing from a lot of our nonprofit partners who are essentially extensions of the city's work in communities. I am gonna vote aye today, but I'm doing so because I'm trusting in our majority leader to really use this next year to bring nonprofits together, to bring all the relevant city partners together, to make sure that this is something that can work and doesn't, you know, do harm. And with that, I want to register my vote as aye. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Thomas was aye, councilmember Jones was aye, councilmember Landau?
Um, I too look forward to working with you in this process to make contracting the city better, but today I'm a nay.
Councilmember Lasada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Chair recognizes Councilmember Young.
Thank you. You know, I heard from some constituents today, you know, regarding this legislation, and we want to make sure that the, the city essentially is held accountable to its residents in this contracting process. We all know there have been some mishaps with some nonprofit vendors, and we want to get it right. And in support of our majority leader, I think this is a step to get it right. I do hope that I will be working with the majority leader to make sure that this legislation essentially can get improved, to make sure that our vendors are getting paid in a timely manner, because six months to get paid for a nonprofit is something that can essentially put them out of business from, for some of our smaller providers. I do look forward to working with, again, the majority leader on this legislation, and with that, I'm gonna vote aye on this legislation.
Councilmember Brooks?
Aye.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Nay.
Nay?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Aye.
Councilmember Scola?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And council president Johnson?
Aye, the ayes are fifteen, the nays are two, majority of all members having voted in affirmative, the bill passes. Would a clerk please read the title of bill number two four zero four one six?
An ordinance authorizing an increase in the non-electoral indebtedness of the city within the Pennsylvania constitutional limit, authorizing the bond committee to sell bonds at public or private negotiated sale to provide funds toward various capital municipal purposes, providing for appropriations to the sinking fund commission for the payment of such bonds, and authorizing agreements to provide credit or payment or liquidity sources for the bonds in connection with the issuance of bonds and certain other actions.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Kathy Gilmore Richardson for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to offer an amendment to bill number two four zero four one six. A copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of council. I move for the adoption of the amendment.
It has been moved and properly seconded. That the amendment to bill number two four zero four one six be adopted, all those in favor will indicate by saying aye. All those opposed, the ayes have it, and the bill has been amended. This bill will be placed on the final passage calendar for our next session in council. Would a clerk please read the title of bill number two four zero four one seven?
An ordinance approving the fiscal year 2025 capital budget providing for the expenditures for the capital purposes of the Philadelphia Gas Works, including the supplying of funds in connection therewith, and acknowledging the receipt of the revised forecast of capital budgets for fiscal years 2026 through 2020, through 2030, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill having been read on two different days, the question now is, should the bill pass finally? Would a chief clerk please call the rule?
Councilmember Phillips?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas was aye, councilmember Jones was aye, councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Lasada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks?
Aye.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Aye.
Councilmember Scola?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And council president Johnson?
Aye, the ayes are seventeen, the nays are zero, majority of all members having voted in affirmative, the bill passes. Would a clerk please read the title of bill number two four zero four six seven?
An ordinance amending Chapter nineteen dash thirty-five hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Hospital Assessments to revise provisions relating to hospital assessments and authorizing the Department of Public Health to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the Commonwealth Department of Human Services relating to such hospital assessments, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill having been read on two different days, the question now is, should the bill pass finally? Would a chief clerk please call the rule?
Councilmember Phillips?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas was aye, councilmember Jones was aye, councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Lasada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks?
Aye.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Aye.
Councilmember Scola?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And council president Johnson?
Aye, the ayes are seventeen, the nays are zero, majority of all members having voted in affirmative, the bill passes. Would a clerk please read the title of bill number two four zero four seven zero?
An ordinance amending Chapter nineteen dash thirty-two hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Keystone Opportunity Zone Economic Development District and Strategic Development Area to provide for additional extensions of certain benefits under certain terms and conditions.
This bill having been read on two different days, the question now is, should the bill pass finally? Would a chief clerk please call the rule?
Councilmember Phillips?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas was aye, councilmember Jones was aye, councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Lasada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks?
Aye.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Aye.
Councilmember Scola?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And council president Johnson?
Aye, the ayes are seventeen, the nays are zero, majority of all members having voted in affirmative, the bill passes. Would a clerk please read the title of bill number two four zero four nine four?
An ordinance authorizing the Director of Planning and Development on behalf of the city to file applications with the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for a Community Development Block Grant, to file applications to participate in the Home Investment Partnership Program and the Emergency Solutions Grant Program, and to apply for a Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS Grant, and to file applications with the Commonwealth to obtain grants under the Act of April twelve, nineteen fifty-six, P.L. fourteen forty-nine, Section Four as amended to prevent and eliminate blight, authorizing the Director of Planning and Development and the Director of Commerce to file applications to obtain other grants from the Commonwealth, authorizing the Director of Commerce to use Section one oh eight Loan Guarantee Program, and authorizing the Director of Planning and Development and the Director of Commerce to enter into all under standings and assurances contained in such applications, and to take all necessary action to accept the grants, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill having been read on two different days, the question now is, should the bill pass finally? The chief clerk please call the rule?
Councilmember Phillips?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas was aye, councilmember Jones was aye, councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Lasada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks?
Aye.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Aye.
Councilmember Scola?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And council president Johnson?
Aye, the ayes are seventeen, the nays are zero, majority of all members having voted in affirmative, the bill passes. Would a clerk please read the title of bill number two four zero four two eight dash A.
An ordinance prohibiting the Commissioner of Public Property or any other official of the City of Philadelphia acting on behalf of the city from entering into, executing, or authorizing a lease extension, lease amendment, lease renewal, or new agreement by and between the city and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for or on behalf of any Commonwealth department or agency at the property located at twenty-one hundred West Gerard Avenue, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill having been read on two different days, the question now is, should the bill pass finally? Would a chief clerk please call the rule?
Councilmember Phillips?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas was aye, councilmember Jones was aye, councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Lasada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks?
Aye.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Aye.
Councilmember Scola?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And council president Johnson?
Aye, the ayes are seventeen, the nays are zero, majority of all members having voted in affirmative, the bill passes. Would a clerk please read the title of bill number two four zero four three four?
An ordinance amending Chapter twelve dash thirty-four hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Use of an Automated Speed Enforcement System to Improve Safety on Roosevelt Boulevard by Providing for the Use Administration and Enforcement of Automated Speed Cameras on Broad Street and Making Related Technical Changes, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill having been read on two different days, the question now is, should the bill pass finally? Would a chief clerk please call the rule?
Councilmember Phillips?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas was aye, councilmember Jones was aye, councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Lasada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks?
Aye.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Aye.
Councilmember Scola?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And council president Johnson?
Aye, the ayes are seventeen, the nays are zero, majority of all members having voted in affirmative, the bill passes. Would a clerk please read the title of bill number two four zero three seven one?
An ordinance amending Title four of the Philadelphia Code entitled The Philadelphia Building Construction and Compensate Code by Amending Subcode PM, the Philadelphia Property Maintenance Code to Add Restrictions and Remedies Regarding Encroaching Trees, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill having been read on two different days, the question now is, should the bill pass finally? Would a chief clerk please call the rule?
Councilmember Phillips?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas was aye, councilmember Jones was aye, councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Lasada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks?
Aye.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Aye.
Councilmember Scola?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And council president Johnson?
Aye, the ayes are seventeen, the nays are zero, majority of all members having voted in affirmative, the bill passes. Would a clerk please read the title of bill number two four zero five zero zero?
An ordinance amending Title nine of the Philadelphia Code entitled Regulation of Businesses, Trades, and Professions by Adding a New Chapter Creating Requirements Related to the Operation and Maintenance of Electric Vehicle Charging Stations Installed at Certain Commercial and Residential Parcels, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill having been read on two different days, the question now is, should the bill pass finally? Would a chief clerk please call the rule?
Councilmember Phillips?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas was aye, councilmember Jones was aye, councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Lasada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks?
Aye.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Aye.
Councilmember Scola?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
Council president Johnson?
Aye, the ayes are seventeen, the nays are zero, majority of all members having voted in affirmative, the bill passes. Would a clerk please read the title of bill number two four zero zero one eight?
An ordinance amending Title nine of the Philadelphia Code entitled Regulation of Businesses, Trades, and Professions by Providing for the Licensing of Persons Responsible for Performing Tenet Evictions at Residential Properties, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill having been read on two different days, the question now is, should the bill pass finally? Would a chief clerk please call the rule?
Councilmember Phillips?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas was aye, councilmember Jones was aye, councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Lasada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks?
Aye.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Aye.
Councilmember Scola?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And council president Johnson?
Aye, the ayes are seventeen, the nays are zero, majority of all members having voted in affirmative, the bill passes. We will now call up consideration of privileged resolutions. Would a clerk please read any additional resolutions on today's calendar?
A resolution introduced by Councilmember Gilmore Richardson authorizing the creation of the Not-for-Profit Provider Task Force to review the city's contract and procurement processes with nonprofit providers and propose recommendations for improved business practices.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Gilmore Richardson for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and properly seconded. That the resolution be adopted, all those in favor will signify by saying aye. All those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A resolution introduced for council president Johnson by Councilmember Gautier approving the reappointment of Reverend Bonnie Camarda as member of the Board of Commissioners of the Philadelphia Housing Authority.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Jamie Gaultier for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, council president. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and properly seconded. That the resolution be adopted, all those in favor will signify by saying aye. All those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the next resolution?
Resolution approving the appointment of Aaron Dwyer as a member of the Board of Commissioners of the Philadelphia Housing Authority introduced by Councilmember Gautier on behalf of council president Johnson.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Gaultier for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, council president. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and properly seconded. That the resolution be adopted, all those in favor will signify by saying aye. All those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
Resolution approving the appointment of Darryl Clark as a member of the Board of Commissioners of the Philadelphia Housing Authority introduced by Councilmember Gautier on behalf of council president Johnson.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Gaultier for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, council president. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and properly seconded. That the resolution be adopted, all those in favor will signify by saying aye. All those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
Approving the reappointment of F.O.Y.S. as a member of the Board of Commissioners of the Philadelphia Housing Authority introduced by Councilmember Gautier on behalf of council president Johnson.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Gaultier for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, council president. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and properly seconded. That the resolution be adopted, all those in favor will signify by saying aye. All those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
Approving the reappointment of Lynette M. Brownsoe as a member of the Board of Commissioners of the Philadelphia Housing Authority introduced by Councilmember Gautier on behalf of council president Johnson.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Gaultier for a motion on the resolution.
Mr. President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and properly seconded. That the resolution be adopted, all those in favor will signify by saying aye. All those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
Resolution approving the reappointment of Ismail A. Shaheed as a member of the Board of Commissioners of the Philadelphia Housing Authority introduced by Councilmember Gautier for council president Johnson.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Gaultier for a motion on the resolution.
Mr. President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and properly seconded. That the resolution be adopted, all those in favor will signify by saying aye. All those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
Approving the reappointment of Herbert Wetzel as a member of the Board of Commissioners of the Philadelphia Housing Authority introduced by Councilmember Gautier for council president Johnson.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Gaultier for a motion on the resolution.
Mr. President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and properly seconded. That the resolution be adopted, all those in favor will signify by saying aye. All those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
Approving the reappointment of Asia Coney as a member of the Board of Commissioners of the Philadelphia Housing Authority introduced by Councilmember Gautier for council president Johnson.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Gaultier for a motion on the resolution.
Mr. President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and properly seconded. That the resolution be adopted, all those in favor, the motion will signify by saying aye. All those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
Resolution approving the appointment of Sandra Dungy Glenn as a member of the Board of Commissioners for the Philadelphia Housing Authority introduced by Councilmember Gautier for council president Johnson.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Gaultier.
Mr. President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and properly seconded. That the resolution be adopted, all those in favor will signify by saying aye. All those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
Also naming the four thousand block of Baring Street at the intersection of North Preston Street Yolanda Laney Basketball Way to honor Yolana Laney Esquire for her trailblazing in women's basketball and contribution to the next generation of women players introduced by Councilmember Gautier.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Gaultier for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and properly seconded. That the resolution be adopted, all those in favor will signify by saying aye. All those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
Also naming the thirty-six hundred block of West Warren Street Coach Lorline Jones U. City Way to honor Coach Lorline Jones and her long history of coaching and mentorship in the City of Philadelphia introduced by Councilmember Gautier.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Gaultier for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and properly seconded. That the resolution be adopted, all those in favor will signify by saying aye. All those opposed, the ayes have it, and the Those opposed, the ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
Also naming the 6,200 block of West Pine Street West Side Weekly Way to honor the West Side Weekly Newspaper and its impact on West Philadelphia introduced by Councilmember Gautier.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Gautier for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property seconded that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
Also naming the 1,400 block of South 55th Street between Springfield Avenue and Chester Avenue as Mont Brown Way to honor Mont Brown and his dedicated community service to Southwest Philadelphia introduced by Councilmember Gautier.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Gautier for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property seconded that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
Recognizing the week of June 17 through June 23, a sanitation workers' week in the city of Philadelphia introduced by Councilmember Young.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Young for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move for its adoption.
It has been moved in property seconded that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A resolution authorizing the Committee on Education to hold hearings investing in the incidence rate impacts and outcomes of homeless students in the school district of Philadelphia introduced by Councilmember Thomas.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Kathy Gilmar Richardson for motion on the resolution on behalf of Councilmember Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. On behalf of Councilmember Thomas, I move the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property seconded that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
Resolution honoring Mashid Kuba and the Kuba Institute for their work organizing Cuba International Senegal, an initiative to enhance education in West Africa and further welcoming Senegalese Minister for Education Mustafa Jirasi to the United States introduced by Councilmember Jones.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Kathy Gilmar Richardson for motion on the resolution on behalf of Councilmember Jones.
Thank you, Council President. On behalf of Councilmember Jones, I move the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property seconded that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
Honoring and celebrating Anthony Glass for his outstanding work as a legislative director for the Office of Councilmember Otis Jones Jr. And wishing him luck with his future endeavors at the University of Notre Dame Law School.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jamie, hmm, the Chair recognizes Councilmember Kathy Gilmar Richardson to make a motion on behalf of Councilmember Jones.
Thank you, Council President. On behalf of Councilmember Jones and all members of council, I move the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property seconded that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Well deserved. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A resolution authorizing the Joint City Council Committees on Education and Children and Youth to hold hearings exploring the creation of a school district of Philadelphia Chief of Joy introduced by Councilmember Landau.
The Chair recognizes joyfully Councilmember Rue Landau for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property seconded that the resolution be adopted with joy. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution, please?
Honoring and congratulating Philadelphia's James Beard Restaurant and Media Award winners, Vietnam Restaurant, Inquirer Critic Craig Lebon and photographer Jessica Griffin and authors David Shuro, Gary Paul Nibon, and Danny Childs introduced by Councilmember Landau.
The Chair recognizes Councilman Rue Landau for motion on the resolution.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property seconded that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the next title of the next resolution?
Honoring and recognizing the humanitarian efforts of the Puerto Rican community who rallied to protect family, friends, and the island of Puerto Rico during cataclysmic hurricanes, earthquakes, and any major disasters that striked introduced by Councilmember Lozada.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Lozada for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property seconded that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the next title of the resolution?
Recognizing June 2024 as Children's Awareness Month in the city of Philadelphia introduced by Councilmember Lozada.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Lozada for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property seconded that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
Recognizing the 10th through the 13th days of the Islamic month of Dua Hager as Eid Al-Hadha in the city of Philadelphia during June 2024 introduced by Councilmember Young.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Young for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move for its adoption.
It has been moved in property seconded that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
Recognizing the month of August 2024 as Public Safety Awareness Month in the city of Philadelphia introduced by Councilmember Young.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Young for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move for adoption of resolution.
It has been moved in property seconded that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
Commemorating and celebrating June 19 as Juneteenth when final enforcement of the Emancipation Proclamation was ordered in Texas, marking the end of enslavement of black and brown people in the United States introduced by Councilmember Brooks.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Brooks for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property seconded that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor, the motion will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
Authorizing the Joint City Council Committees on Education and Children and Youth to hold hearings on the prevalence of the usage of exclusionary school discipline and the use of collective punishment practices in public schools across Philadelphia, and on how these and other policies and practices perpetuate anti-blackness and anti-black racism and harm students academically, socially, emotionally, to the detriment of their health, well-being, and future life outcomes, introduced by Councilmember Brooks.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Brooks for motion on the resolution.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property seconded that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
Honoring and celebrating Maurice Mitchell, a community organizer, social movement strategist, and national leader in the Movement for Black Lives and the National Director of the Working Families Party on the occasion of his visit to Philadelphia introduced by Councilmember Brooks.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Brooks for motion on the resolution.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property seconded that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
Declaring the month of July as Disability Pride Month in the city of Philadelphia introduced by Councilmember Brooks.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Brooks for motion on the resolution.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property seconded that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
Honoring and celebrating the team creating the Autism Play Date for their social, for their work on autism awareness and inviting all to attend the Autism Play Date at Smith Memorial Park this August introduced by Councilmember Brooks.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Brooks for motion on the resolution.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property seconded that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it and the resolution is adopted.
A resolution honoring and recognizing the labors of brotherly love, sisterly effectiveness, and sibling solidarity committed by aid workers who have crossed rivers and oceans of tears to feed the hungry, to build shelter, to bring music, and to bring healing and the warmth of compassion to those in greatest need introduced by Councilmember O'Rourke.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember O'Rourke for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property seconded that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the last resolution?
Not yet.
That's it.
Not yet.
Not yet. Go ahead.
Not yet. Four more. Resolution honoring and celebrating Palestinian theologian and educator Reverend Dr. Muthur Isaac, the pastor of Evangelical Lutheran Christmas Church in Bethlehem and the Lutheran Church in Bet Sahur, Dean of Bethlehem Bible College, Director of the Christ at the Checkpoint Conference, and Coordinator of Global Chiro's for Justice introduced by Councilmember O'Rourke.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember O'Rourke for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President, I move for the adoption of resolution.
It has been moved in property seconded that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A resolution calling upon local, state, and federal law enforcement as well as the United States Department of Agriculture and the Department of Human Services to investigate and prevent Supplemental Nutritional Assistance Program SNAP fraud for those in the city of Philadelphia introduced by Councilmember Bass.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Bass for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property seconded that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor, the motion will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it and the resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and commending the Save the Train Coalition for the preservation of Philadelphia's septic services in the community's time of need introduced by Councilmember Bass.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Bass for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property seconded that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor, the motion will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
And finally, honoring and recognizing the Black Clergy of Philadelphia and Vicinity for being a pillar of strength and a symbol of hope for Philadelphia through its social, justive activism introduced by Councilmember Bass for Council President Johnson.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Bass for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President, on your behalf, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property seconded that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor, the motion will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it and the resolution is adopted.
There are no more resolutions in my possession, Council President.
Ain't nobody gonna say we on work, ain't said you wanna say, but you ain't gonna say we on work, so. Sheesh. We're finished, we're good. Are there any speeches want to be a part of the minority at this time? The Chair recognizes Councilmember Brooks.
Thank you, Council President, and I want to thank all my colleagues for supporting the Angel Davis Eviction Accountability Bill. Philadelphia's poor profit eviction system has proven itself to be reckless and violent, especially for some of the most vulnerable residents. This bill will put into place the basic oversight and accountability that has been missing in our system for far too long, and it will prevent the violence and trauma that's nearly cost Angel Davis her life. In the budget that we passed today, I'm proud of the $19 million for rental assistance, the $5 million for Built to Last, and many other investments we are making that will improve the lives of working people. But I am very disappointed that the budget includes a $60,000 cut to the Office of Worker Protections. As a former domestic worker, I will continue my work to protect and uplift workers in this city. This fall, I will be introducing a anti-retaliation legislation to secure the protections for workers, primarily black and brown women, who face intimidation, threats, and termination of their employment simply for standing up for their basic rights. Also today, I am welcoming and honoring my friend and colleague Maurice Mitchell, a longtime organizer for racial and economic justice and the National Director for the Working Families Party. Maurice has been a powerful voice for black, working-class people here in Philadelphia and around the country, fighting for resources in every community and against the privatizations of our public schools. I am proud to be working alongside him on a range of issues that impact working families here in Philadelphia and across the country, for affordable housing and to make sure we fully fund public schools everywhere. Speaking of fully funded public schools, today I passed my resolution condemning private school vouchers. As I said on the steps of the Capitol on Monday, I don't care what Jay-Z or Mick Mills has to say on this issue. As a proud parent and grandparent of Philadelphia public school students, I don't want vouchers anywhere near my city or my family. Vouchers will mean more money for educational profiteers and more exclusionary private schools that will keep kids out, kick kids out based on their ideas and what a good student is supposed to look like. I'm sure that they will work out fine for millionaires and billionaires, but it's a bad deal here for Philly families. Phila- Philadelphia families deserve fully funded public schools that affirm the values of every child and nurture a lifelong love of learning. And I believe our schools should be places of community and joy where children and their families actually want to spend time. That's why I support Lift Every Voice, an organization made up of public school parents in their campaigns to end collective punishment and restore joy to in our schools. In order to build community and restore joy, we must recognize that anti-blackness that many students and families encounter in our educational spaces. I have introduced a resolution to authorize the Committees on Education and Children and Youth to hold joint hearings on collective punishment and its relationship to anti-black racism in school. These hearings will be one step toward overturning racist educational policies and making our schools more welcoming and joyful places for black families. As the Chair of City Council's Committee on People with Disabilities, I introduce two resolutions today aimed at supporting and uplifting Philadelphians with disabilities. About 1 in 6 people in Philadelphia has a disability, and this July, we will celebrate their resilience and diversity during Disability Pride Month in Philadelphia. And I want to thank, send a thank you to Vicki Landers and our other advocates who make disability pride and amazing celebration every year. Today, I also introduce a resolution to condemn, I'm sorry, to commend all the love, work, and care that goes into the annual Autism Play Date. This year's annual Autism Play Date will be held on August 10 at Smith Memorial Playground, and everyone is invited to join us in a growing culture of care and support for people with autism and their families. The Autism Play Date was founded seven years ago by former Councilmember Derek Green, and last year, he passed the torch over to former Councilmember Sharon Vaughn. And this year, as the Chair of Committee of People with Disabilities, I'm proud to build on their legacy and ensure that the Autism Play Date continues to be a day of joy and celebration for people with autism in our entire city. And finally, I introduce a resolution recognizing and celebrating Juneteenth in Philadelphia. Our country was built on the foundation of racism and exploitation. And even 159 years after the Emancipation Proclamation was finally enforced in Texas, racism, exploitation are still deeply embedded in our society, causing pain and racial disparities in health, wealth, and educational outcomes. And in order to face these realities and overcome these injustices, we must also make space for joy of liberation. And that's what Juneteenth is about. It's about nurturing and celebrating the beauty of our liberation, and it keeps, it's about keeping a vision of liberation at the forefront of our minds and sharing with our children and grandchildren. And I know there will be some beautiful celebrations in Philadelphia on Juneteenth and beyond, and I look forward to celebrating with many of you next Wednesday. Thank you so much, Council President.
You're welcome. The Chair recognizes Councilman O'Rourke.
The Council President, most of what needs to be said has been said today. I do want to just quickly just say that it was sobering to honor and to sit and speak with Reverend Dr. Muthur Isak today, who ministers in the West Bank before a council this morning, even before we had our caucus meeting, we sat down and talked together. And his refrain to me is not dissimilar from what I've heard from many Palestinians and those connected to the region time and time again. They're simply asking for people to account for their humanity, and so I'm grateful to be able to try to do that. We tried to do that in a respectful, considerate manner today, honoring the aid workers who have been working through catastrophic conditions to fight like hell to preserve life. I think that matters, even as we're trying to get the business done. I think if we feel uncomfortable, or if we're responding or feel something in our body, that's a symbol of our humanity, reacting to the times within which we live. And so it was an honor to be able to speak to both of those things today. I do want to shout out our National Director Maurice Mitchell. I'm grateful to my minority leader who brought him in today and for us to be able to celebrate the work that he has done, continues to do. I do believe that there is a lot more work to build with the Working Families Group here in the city, and looking forward to doing that. But let me say this quickly. I had the benefit of going on, I guess it was Saturday, out to the 4th Councilmanic District. I want to thank all the tenants, as well as Councilmember Jones, for coordinating our visit last weekend for opening up your homes, their homes to us. Strong support Councilmember Jones's leadership and interest that has been expressed by Councilmember Brooks, by Councilmember Landau, by Councilman Gautier, Councilman Driscoll, and others. Tenants previously came to council, some elders, one lady reminded us that our elders are critical assets in our communities. That stuck with me, Council President. The conditions that we saw, the pictures that were sent back to me after I had to leave, were horrific, include holes in walls, gas valves exposed, missing pipes, mildew, mold, critter infestations, dysfunctional mailroom, laundry that's not accessible, limited access to any communal spaces for our seniors. If you have a grandparent or you have an elder in your family, you went to that, I think you would be right to be enraged by what you saw. I know that this is not an uncommon thing, it happens from time to time, but I'm looking forward to working with Councilmember Jones and all of us to make sure that we get some tenant protections for our folk there, as well as a better living condition all around for birth shalom. Thank you, Council President. I'm grateful to be concluding my first six months of my first year of my first term and passing a budget, and looking forward to the next six months. Bless you.
Partying a speech on behalf of the majority, the Chair recognizes Councilmember Phillips.
Good afternoon, Council President Johnson in Philadelphia. I come before you today to say to the residents of the city of Philadelphia that this city council is working collaboratively for you. Since the beginning of this council session, I reserve that each of us are actively engaged in neighborhoods, pushing city leadership to serve well, and are constantly generating ideas to help move the city forward. Though we have various social views and different understandings on how to reach change, we never allow those views to hinder our collective agenda to make the city of Philadelphia a better place to live. Philadelphia, you have asked for a more neighborhood-friendly, engaged, and collaborative, and hard-working city council. The facts show that you have it. Council President Johnson, this collaborative nature has much to do with your leadership. One of your formidable personality traits is your ability to get along with those who work with you. This trait of yours has rubbed off on all of us. You have worked with each of us to make sure we have a collective understanding of the following. Number one, we will be orderly. This can primarily be seen in your emphasis that we will show up to serve Philadelphians each day, on time, and you push for us to never miss council briefings or committee hearings. Because of your leadership, most of us are afraid to be late because we know we will miss the beginning of the meeting. Number two, we will be in neighborhoods. This can chiefly be seen by the town halls you partner with all of us on throughout the city. You have also supported us in providing each of us with resources so that we can take back to our neighborhoods and make Philadelphia better. Number three, we will work collaboratively. This could be seen in your behind-the-scenes conversations to bring us all together to support the budget, as well as to make consensus decisions when it comes to voting together. Personally, a conference room on the 5th floor originally designated to our 9th District Office became a community space because you recognized the need for the 5th floor to work together and share a common space. I can also name about four major bills you helped us as a body find common ground on. You've been like a father to many of us. Some of us affectionately called you Dad. I admire you greatly for this. Our city, our city has been asking for this type of leadership, and you, our leader, have done it. What I've learned early on in my life is that when we set aside our differences, you gain a better understanding of each other, and from that, we are able to carve out incredible ideas together that can move our city forward. For as long as I can remember, it's always been in my DNA to find ways to get along with someone. I recall being bullied in elementary school, middle school, and even high school. In one of those bullying incidents in middle school, I was jumped by four boys, all because I finally stood up to them after being picked up, picked on for an entire school year. I remember the very next week after being jumped, I met with those four bullies, trying to come up with a reasonable understanding of how all of us can get along. My family, my friends, my neighbors, all said to me, Anthony, why don't you fight back and let them have it as well? Well, in my young life, no matter how hard I tried to be combative and tried to fight, I could never find a space in me to verbally or physically fight back. I could never be that aggressive. Instead, what pulls at me in my DNA is to say, how can we fix the problem that we have? How can we get along? How can we work together? When it comes to relationship building, I like to get along with everyone, even those who may not like me for some odd reason. I believe there is good in everyone, and we need to work with everyone to serve others. That's why I'm excited about this city council and having a council leader who under- and having a council leader who understands getting along and also the importance of us working together. And that, Philadelphia, is how we're going to make this an amazing city. Philadelphia, you didn't make a mistake. You have picked a council that is addressing your concerns, whether it's Isaiah Thomas ferociously calling for hearings and initiatives around public education, or Kathy Gilmore Richardson making sure our government is transparent and accountable, or Jamie Gottlieb, ensuring equitable and affordable housing is a real thing in Philadelphia. Then there's Jim Herity, a labor veteran, who always makes sure that we have policies that protect workers in the city, all while Jim works closely behind the scenes with folks like Kendra Brooks in creating policies that she believes in that say we must stop targeting people of color and keep Philadelphia accessible and affordable, where Kendra never lets us forget that we must make this a city affordable for low-income individuals. And Brooks' work connects well with Nina Amon's work, championing the entire city to understand public health is one of the number-one crises in the city. And then we have Nicholas O'Rourke, reminding us that we must find a way to give our most vulnerable population in the city opportunities to get a leg up and assure democracy we all can participate in and receive an equal share. The admirable work of Councilwoman Cindy Bass ensures that our Department of Human Services is one of the best in the nation. In South Philadelphia, Mark Scoler's leadership helps us understand we have a duty to always respond well to our neighbors, even at midnight. Curtis Jones remains committed to making public safety his top priority for the city. And our 7th District Champion, Kexy Lazada, showed us that there is a path forward for Kingsington, and she expects the best for her district. Rue Landau's experiences in the legal world is helping us craft policies to ensure no Philadelphian civil rights are violated and individuals have access to resources. My Driscoll has helped us push Septa to think more deeply about expanding its access in the Northeast, and he's helped change the landscape of the Department of License and Inspections. Jeffrey Young resonates with Philadelphians who are highly intelligent because his leadership is highly intelligent because he calls for the protection of Philadelphian rights. And for 40 years, Brian O'Neill has made sure the city has some of the best capital and quality-of-life projects. And me, I'm simply focused on investing in our youth, as well as listening to the neighbors of the 9th District and developing policies initiatives that create excellent quality of life and ends bureaucracy throughout the city. Philadelphia, this council's ability to set aside differences should be a model for how we govern our own and how we all work together throughout the city of Philadelphia and beyond. The days of council members fussing in hallways, fighting on council floors, and forming alliances against each other seem far behind us. If our city's leadership cannot find common ground to solve issues, then how can we expect our city to ultimately come together to support a common goal to make Philadelphia better? All 17 of us have different styles of leadership, yet for the most part, we have always agreed on substance, and that is neighborhood impact, addressing poverty, education, health, and economic development. Philadelphia, each of us, all 17 of us, have our niche and have honed in on issues that matter to you. Our sheer diversity and willingness to work together is the icing on the cake. As we research this council session, Philadelphia, I say thank you for your patience, for pushing us, and for assembling this body of 17. This city council is stronger because of you, Philadelphia. God bless.
Very well said, Councilmember Phillips. Can I be like a big brother, though, my dad? I mean, I still listen to Little Dirt. Know what I mean? Very well said. The Chair recognizes Majority Leader Kathy Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. President. And I too rise to thank you for your leadership with this new council body and getting us through our first budget that we concluded and voted upon today. So thank you for your leadership and for working closely with our mayor and the administration to get us to this point. I also want to thank you all, colleagues, for your support on Bill Number 240379. I know that we have a lot of work to do during the summer months and leading into the fall relative to additional recommendations on how we make this process better for our nonprofits and ensure that those who are doing business with the city of Philadelphia, particularly our nonprofits who are most often serving the most vulnerable, are able to be paid on time. And so I want you all to know, colleagues, that you have my commitment to continue that work. Thank you for your vote on the resolution today, and we are looking forward to getting started. And thank you all for all the recommendations for the task force that we have received thus far. I also want to wish all the fathers a Happy Father's Day. I hope you all receive your treats. And all the father figures that we have in council, thank you very much. Very quickly, Council President, I also want to thank Liz McCullum, our Chief Clerk, who stepped in at a very, very tough time for us. And Liz has been stellar, as all Girls High Girls are, just wanted to add that in. But she has just been stellar in helping to keep us moving. So thank you to Liz and to the entire team, and Council President, to your entire staff. We appreciate all the work that you all do. You all know that I started in this body as an intern this year, 25 years ago this year. And so interns and having interns in the office is very important to me. So I wanted to take this opportunity to recognize four interns that we have with us today. Adam Kelly, just stand where your name is called. He just graduated from Temple. Adam just graduated from Temple University in May. His undergraduate degree is in political science. And then also Michael Quinn, he graduated from Penn State. And I want to say to the both of you, I thank you both for your service and for all the hard work you have done on behalf of our office. Your work did not go unnoticed. I know they are in, are you in the job market now? They're both in the job market now, so remember those names, and we will be knocking on your doors. Also wanted to recognize Tylee Farmer. You heard from her during the caucus session, she's a junior. She's a junior at North Carolina A&amp;T State University in Greensboro, North Carolina. She'll be with us for the summer. She's a member of the Class of 2025, a criminal justice major, and of course, a member of the greatest sorority, Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated. And finally, today, Mr. President, we have with us Jonathan Mason Jr. He is graduating from West Orange High School. And he will be attending Rider University in New Jersey. Mr. President, today I rise to thank someone who has been with us from day one. I call them A1, Day 1 Team Members. It has been said that we make a living out of what we get, but we make a life out of what we give. Today marks a bittersweet moment as my team and I celebrate the retirement of someone truly special. Someone who has made her way through life with a pure heart and an unwavering commitment to serving her community and the city of Philadelphia. She joined my office on day one in 2020 as our administrative assistant. However, before this time, she served as a court clerk in the First Judicial District of Pennsylvania, where she played a vital role in the judicial system. While this may have been where many of you have met Ms. Vanita, I have been blessed to know her for a very long time for she is married to our former PHL Council Team Member, Mark Green, Ward Leader, Mark Green. And Mr. Mark has been there for some very wonderful moments throughout my entire career and very early in my career, and that's how I met Ms. Vanita. Ms. Vanita has been a cornerstone in our office and in the community, particularly in the Allegheny West Community, consistently going beyond the call of duty, particularly during those hard COVID years. No matter how big or small the constituent matter, she has always demonstrated a remarkable ability to handle challenges with grace and efficiency. In fact, I have always referred to Ms. Vanita as the plug because of her remarkable ability to navigate city resources and services to best serve every single one of our constituents. She knows who to call and how to get things done, and she is always eager to share crucial information on city services across the city of Philadelphia. If you are a ward leader, a committee person, or simply a constituent who has called our office for assistance, I know that you too are all too familiar with Ms. Vanita. Team KGR, to Team KGR, she has served as a mother figure, as a true protector, and as a friend. And despite of her small frame, we know that Ms. Vanita is not to be messed with and that she will always defend those in need, including the constituents that we serve daily. She has brought something truly special to our workplace and to Room 581 that cannot be replicated. Her wisdom, her kindness, and compassion, which has touched the lives of many. Her sense of humor and dedication to service are unparalleled. And she will be greatly missed. Ms. Vanita was able to help us in some of the toughest moments. And while she had tough moments too, we all got through them together. Now, if you ever called the office and you weren't pleasant on the other end, Ms. Vanita dealt with it, and so we'll miss that too. And as Maya Angelou says, say thank you. Always say thank you. It's the greatest gift you can give someone because thank you is what you say to God. Ms. Vanita, we thank you, we love you, we appreciate you, and we will miss you. Happy retirement, Ms. Vanita.
The Chair now recognizes Councilwoman Jamie Gaudier.
Thank you, Council President. Today, I was proud to vote in support of a budget that puts City Hall to work for West and Southwest Philadelphia. I celebrate the inclusion of much of Mayor Parker's budget proposal, increased funding for the Office of Homeless Services, expanding and improving 911 dispatch, more local tax revenue for our schools, additional dollars for grassroots anti-violence initiatives, $100 million over five years for housing programs, and much more. I am particularly excited that we approved $214 million over five years for new clean and green programs. Through Just Services PHL, I have spent the past three budget cycles fighting for a significant investment in quality-of-life services like cleaning and greening. I am pleased that this year, we boldly invested in the basic municipal services that keep our neighborhoods healthy, safe, and vibrant, rather than the drips and drabs that we saw in the past. We also fought for and won critical funding on top of the mayor's budget proposal. For instance, we obtained $14 million to build a new permanently affordable housing complex at the site of the former UC Townhomes. I look forward to welcoming back the working-class Black and Brown families that have called this place home since it was known as the Black Bottom. Many thanks to my partners in this fight, Minority Leader Kendra Brooks, Councilmember Rue Landau, and Minority Whip Nicholas O'Rourke and Majority Whip Isaiah Thomas. Our coalition also won an additional $19 million for rental assistance and $5 million in the Philadelphia Energy Authority's Built to Last program. And I was also proud to help secure funding to expand quality-of-life enforcement, upgrade public school playgrounds, expand benefits outreach and advertising, invest in anchor institutions like the Philadelphia Zoo, and more. I'm especially proud and grateful for council and the mayor's unanimous support for the low-income property tax freeze bill that I authored. Home ownership is the foundation of the American dream, but dramatic property tax increases threaten to snatch generational wealth away from the Philadelphians who need it the most. With another round of property assessments just around the corner, we can now say that help is on the way. While we are on the topic of housing, I also want to thank my colleagues for voting to approve Bill Number 240058. This bill states that density bonus payments to the Housing Trust Fund must be spent within specific geographic boundaries, ensuring that parts of the city seeing increased development receive the affordable housing assistance they are entitled to. Last week, we authorized a ballot measure that, if approved, will force the city to follow the code and put every density bonus payment into the Housing Trust Fund. When a developer receives a buy right density bonus by making a payment in lieu of affordable housing to the city of Philadelphia, the community is promised that this funding will be reinvested back into affordable housing in their neighborhood. However, the sad truth is that guaranteed, these guaranteed benefits very rarely appear. And by enacting this bill, we make sure that the communities that need affordable housing the most will finally get their due. To conclude, I want to thank Council President Johnson for his leadership. It is because of our council president's direction that we enacted such a transformative budget and that we passed so many pieces of critical legislation for our communities in the first six months of this council term. I look forward to being just as productive during the remaining three and a half years. Thank you so much, and happy summer, everybody.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Nina Amon.
All right, I'll be shorter. But first of all, I echo everything my colleagues have said about this body, particularly about you, Council President. Your leadership as a first-term council member has been invaluable, and I'm very grateful to you and all the leadership team on council. I was very pleased today that we were able to pass out my first bill. And this is a bill that is about maintenance and making sure our EV charging stations are properly maintained so that we can use electric vehicles. Philadelphia is the sixth-largest city in the country and should be a leader in addressing climate change. If we want to decrease emissions and meet our carbon neutrality goals by 2050, then we need to reduce the number of gas-powered vehicles on the road. However, we cannot transition to electric vehicles without having the proper operational infrastructure in place. And focusing on maintenance and not only installation gives us a comprehensive approach for improving our EV infrastructure and meeting consumer demands. One of the issues we have encountered when we were doing the research is range anxiety. And importantly, this bill addresses range anxiety and ensures that drivers can get from point A to point B safely. If a driver travels to power their vehicle and the charger is not operational, they could be stuck or forced to drive around until they actually run out of power. But the other goal that we have, which is an underlying goal, is workforce development. This would be, we hope, a job creator. The maintenance of EV chargers can provide union electrician jobs, as well as general maintenance jobs, particularly for those who might have trouble entering the mainstream job market if they do have any kind of record. And lastly, small businesses could potentially form around this bill. And I look forward to working with all different entities who intersect in this space so we can actually make this bill functional, we can make sure it is useful for residents of Philadelphia, and that we are a model for the rest of the country. I also wanted to thank all my colleagues for passing- for passing this bill with 17 votes. I'm very thankful for that. And I wanted to tell all of you that it has been a pleasure working with you, and I look forward to the remaining three and a half years. And lastly, I wanted to speak about the resolution that I co-introduced with Council Majority Leader Catherine Gilmore Richardson. And we had a press conference this morning with some folks who are in this space of calling on the Office of Homeless Services and its contracted service providers to update their intake form to reflect the collection of pregnancy-related data. We know that housing is prenatal care, healthcare. Housing is prenatal healthcare. And studies have revealed that unhoused pregnant people are at higher risks and face substantial perinatal and neonatal effects, such as preterm labor and low birth weight, than those with housing security. Collecting this data will allow us as a city to better direct resources and services to those who are at their most vulnerable points in their life. And homelessness has been identified as a common environmental risk factor for the mothers whose infants died in 2017. So I want to once again thank my Majority Leader, Catherine Gilmore Richardson, for not only co-introducing this resolution with me, but for her commitment to this issue, and many others, including Councilmember Cindy Bass, who was the chair of the Health Committee before me, Public Health Committee. And we look forward, as a city, to make sure that we continue to make maternal healthcare a priority, to make sure that we are looking at issues around morbidity and mortality, as well as infant mortality. If we don't get our residents their first good step in our city, what are we doing? So we need to make sure all of us take it seriously, whether you can give birth or not, because every one of you were born at some point. So you realize that this is an issue for all of Philadelphia, and we're going to continue to work on this. And I want to thank, again, all of you who have supported this resolution and who showed up to this press conference this morning. And finally, I want to thank my team, particularly Hira Halma and Sarah Denault, who helped shape this legislation around the EV chargers, as well as Ladasha Maxwell, who is my Chief of Staff, and the rest of our team for supporting all of us to get through this and get here. And I want to acknowledge Council President's staff member, Michael Cook, for supporting us as we put this legislation together. As we know, we don't do anything alone, and council is showing me how much teamwork makes dream work. So thank you very much. Have a great summer, everyone.
You're welcome. Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilmember Cindy Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President, and congratulations on your first full session as Council President. We started out together, and, you know, we've grown a lot, both of us. And it was the three of us and a few others, myself and you and Councilman Squilla and our little team. And, you know, we're the last ones standing of that team. But, you know, you're doing a great job. I just really wanted to say that. Much love and appreciation for everything that you do. I just wanted to make mention of a couple of things. The first is that there are many Juneteenth festivals that will be happening this weekend, and we want to, you know, support all of them. But I do want to point out the longest-running Juneteenth festival happens every year in Germantown, on Germantown Avenue between Washington Lane and Johnson Street. And it's running this Saturday from 12 to 5, and it's sponsored by the Johnson House, which I believe is the only fully-certified house on the Underground Railroad in the city of Philadelphia. So it's run by Ms. Connie Swenson and the Board of Directors of the Johnson House. So we want to invite folks to come out. And again, this is the longest-running Juneteenth festival in the city of Philadelphia before folks were even really talking about what Juneteenth really is. This festival was going on. And so we want folks to know that, remember it, and come out and support, as well as support other festivals in your neighborhoods. I wanted to talk just briefly about the resolution that we passed today around SNAP fraud talking points. And for those who may not know, SNAP is also known as food stamps. There is something that's happening where folks who have access to food stamps on an EBT card go to use their card, and suddenly, there's nothing there. And the card could have just recently been loaded, and they go and try to purchase their food. They're in line, they've got all their groceries, and they're told that there is no, there are no resources available on this card to be able to purchase. And just imagine if that's you. Imagine if you're in line with your debit card, and all of a sudden, you just got paid or just got, you know, some money added onto your debit card, and you're in line with all of your items, and someone says to you, you have eight cents in your account. And the panic that would set in when you know that you should have a whole lot more, you should have enough certainly to buy the items that you have decided to purchase. That's what's happening right now. We have had cases where folks have lined up to purchase their groceries only to be told there's nothing available, there's no funds on the EBT card. And then, as the research is done, the card has been used in California, or the card has been used in New York. Meanwhile, these folks have not traveled to California or New York, or even outside of their regular travel. So that something nefarious is happening here. Our resolution is calling on local, state, and federal bodies, lawmaking bodies, to investigate, come up with a solution, figure out exactly what it is that we can do to make sure that the program is safe, that it is secure, that we want public hearings, we want people to be able to come out and detail their experience and develop and recommend improvements. So that's what we are requesting right now. And I do want to point out that prior to the EBT card, there were, you know, back, you know, in our days, there were food stamps, like the little coupon books, you know. And someone told me that before that, that they actually would just provide you with a check, a separate check. And so as we were having this discussion, someone said, well, why is it that poor people don't have the option to have options about how they want to be able to receive these funds? Why do they not have? Why is there only one option that folks think this is the best option for you? And it may not be the best option, and I can guarantee it's not the best option, for everybody who receives SNAP. So there's a lot of discussion that needs to happen here. And, Mr. President, we just want to say thank you to your leadership on this, and we want to thank all of the members of council who supported this resolution and support looking into this matter and making sure that we find a solution as quickly as possible. Thank you, everyone, and have a great summer. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lazada.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to begin by congratulating the class of 2024, all of the graduates in my community and in our city for they actually began their academic journey during a global pandemic. And for them to have gotten this far to where they see graduation day really speaks to their resilience. And so I want to congratulate them. Although they've left already, I would also like to express my gratitude to everyone who participated in today's meeting to provide testimony on the resolutions that I presented. As we move through the hurricane season, which began on June 1st, I urge you to keep the people of Puerto Rico in your thoughts. Many have ties to our city or have previously lived here before having to return home to the island to support their families. Although we are separated by significant distance, the Puerto Rican community here in Philadelphia stands in solidarity with those on the island. With the summer expected to be hotter than ever, the preparations being made by these organizations are especially crucial. The efforts that all of them are making are putting a true testament to their unity, to unity. I'd like to specifically recognize Dr. Carmen Fabel San Miguel, Reverend Bonnie Carmada, and former council member Maria Queñón Sanchez, who led the efforts here in Philadelphia during Hurricane Maria. I'd also like to recognize Liberty Coke, American Airlines, and Einstein Hospital for all of their support in ensuring that resources and all of the necessary relief efforts got to the island when they were needed the most. In addition, I want to thank my fellow council members for supporting the resolution to designate June as Children's Awareness Month, initially established in 1996 to raise awareness for children affected by violence. The focus has expanded to promoting initiatives that safeguard and celebrate the innocence of childhood. Our children are the future of our city, and investing in them while we work through so many other issues is essential. As the Chair of the Committee of Public Property, I had the opportunity to put forth a new franchise agreement with Verizon. Part of that agreement will provide the internet and improve cybersecurity in 183 rec centers. This is a major win in increasing the quality of the quality of safe spaces for our children to play this summer and many summers to come. This has been a remarkably productive council session, and I am proud of the work that we have done together. In particular, I want to thank you, Council President, for your consistent guidance, direction, and support. I'd also like to thank the Kensington Caucus and the Special Committee on Kensington for standing together for a neighborhood that I hold close to my heart. I would like to also thank Mayor Parker for prioritizing the crisis in Kensington, one of the many vital issues on her priority list as she promised on her campaign trail. We have established the 24-hour cleaning pilot program, passed a bill to regulate the hours of nuisance businesses, authorized a controller to investigate the use of taxpayer dollars for the opioid crisis. Later this summer, we will be investigating the barriers to treatment on beds in our city. The Seventh Council District was once the home of factories that created thousands of families sustaining jobs with amazing quality of life for its residents. We will return to that because the people who call the Seventh home deserve it. We are reimagining neighborhoods like Kensington, and we are re-envisioning the Seventh Council District. Today may be the last day of this council session, and people may call it a summer recess. But residents should know that we all will continue throughout the summer serving the people who have elected us. I'd like to say Happy Father's Day to all of my colleagues, our support staff, who are dads or who serve as father figures here in city council. Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome, and thank you. The chair recognizes Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank my colleagues for passing a few resolutions today. I want to say Eid Mubarak to the Muslims of our city and our region as they celebrate the second major holiday in their religion, Eid Al-Hadha. I want to thank colleagues for passing a resolution honoring Sanitation Workers Week, which nationally is called Waste and Recycling Workers Week. And we also passed a resolution today naming August as Public Safety Awareness Month, and that is in recognition of National Night Out. We also passed a resolution naming part of Master Street near Freedom Theater after Erica Alexander, who is best known as her character as Maxine Shaw on Living Single. She was discovered there at Freedom Theater. And we also passed a resolution naming portions of College Avenue as Freedom Fighters Way near Gerard College. Those freedom fighters are those who marched around the college for about eight months to try to organize to get Gerard College to be integrated. And speaking of Gerard College, I had the privilege and honor yesterday to be the commencement speaker for the class of 2024, where that class included their valedictorian, who is a Gates Scholar, who will be going to USC for free. That class has millions of dollars in scholarships with only 34 students. And so I'm very proud of those seniors at Gerard College this year who allowed me to be their commencement speaker yesterday. I want to talk about some of the things that we've done in my first, you know, session as a council member for the Fifth District. Just want my constituents to know we are always here fighting for the Fifth. We've held town halls on gun violence and other topics. We've gone door-to-door to support neighbors who are experiencing trauma over tragic shootings. We've canvassed communities to provide information and resources on overdose prevention. We have done a number of cleanups throughout North Philly, planted flowers on Lehigh Avenue. We've held SEPTA accountable for community engagement with the Bus Revolution Plan. We've supported workers of Unite Here as they went on strike. We've had a brunch for seniors on Mother's Day. We've drafted wills for seniors and other estate planning documents with the Barris Association. We sponsored community events on Gerard Avenue with Brett Donner Bullock. And we've supported a plethora of other community events in our district. Last week, we held OSHA 10 certification trains for residents to provide opportunities for them to begin a career path in the construction industry. We've stood up with residents as they demanded transparency from their city government regarding how we treat the opioid crisis. So I want to thank my colleagues for supporting Bill Number 240428A today. And we've also, you know, this is something I haven't been, I haven't spoke about yet, but we've also won approximately about $5 million, as I'm calling capital C money in this year's budget, to support the construction of a new CSU B摩or Library in North Philadelphia. We've improved the quality of life for residents of Jefferson Manor by changing the zoning bill. And this fall, I look forward to advancing legislation that would add protections to property owners dealing with construction, legislation that will provide more opportunities for communities to participate in the construction activity through an EOP requirement. And I look forward to holding hearings to investigate commercial office viability here in Center City. As we move forward for the summer, I have noticed, I like to begin a lot of calls of constituents who've been saying that their block party applications have been denied by the police department. So just want to put on a record that block parties are a way for communities to unite and can create more community engagement. So I encourage the police department to really, really take a look at their policies denying block party permits because of the potential of criminal activity. If that's the case, then my block, half my family's block, will be denied because of the potential of criminal activity. I mean, we live in the city. Shootings are down in this city. So I think as the perception of crime increases, we have to look at the data and really see that shootings and crime in the city is down. So we should be able to provide an opportunity for our communities to celebrate. And one last thing, Mr. President, I just want to wish yourself, other fathers of this body, Happy Father's Day. It is a hard job being here in my first session. I get home at 8, 9 o'clock, and my son's looking at me like, it's time to play. And I'm like, nah, it's time for bed. But ultimately, I want to, you know, thank the fathers of this body for being fathers because in our community, we know that it's not, it's not something that is rarely, it's not something that we see every day. Just my own personal life, I mean, you know, my dad wasn't my dad until I was about 16 years old. So, you know, but I just want to thank you all for being fathers. And thank you for being the leader of this body and really mentoring me, helping me out through this process, giving me great advice on how to deal with certain things. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Councilman Rulandau.
Thank you so much, Council President. I promise it'll be about an hour, okay? Just kidding. I will be very quick. I just want to, I will add to the thanks for everybody here, for the council fam. I really, really love working with you guys. To you, Council President, you really have been a mentor to all of us. So this is just the beginning of many years ahead. So quickly, I introduced a resolution today to hold a hearing on adding a Chief of Joy position at the School District of Philadelphia. That's an idea by the Lift Every Voice organization that they are pushing. This position will ensure such things as minimum recess times at schools across the district and to expand mental health services that are so desperately needed that will help to heal our children. This position will support positive, joyous activities that will benefit students, families, educators, and the whole community. So I'm really excited for the hearing. And then finally, I just wanted to say, I want to, I was very proud to co-sponsor Councilmember Brooks's Disability Pride Resolution today, recognizing July as Disability Pride. I know that members from Liberty Resources and Liberty Housing wanted to be here today. They had a loss in their professional family, and they were at the funeral today. But I've spent my professional career making the city and housing But I've spent my professional career making the city and housing, in particular, accessible for all. I've been proud to raise the Disability Pride flag and march in the parade and advocate for the ramp on the north side of City Hall, among other things. But most importantly, I know it's this late hour, it's not so many people are here. So hopefully they'll reread the transcript. But I want to thank everybody in this space who makes City Council hearings accessible for all. So from our sign language interpreters, to the administrative services and Sergeant of Arms staff, to our Chief Clerk, our Stenographer, our audiovisual team, and to you, Council President, and your office for making this space so accessible. A special thank you that you have just purchased a brand-new mini-ramp that is movable that will help us to get people with wheelchairs up to this podium when we have presentations. I couldn't be happier about that. Everybody deserves to get up there for their honor and for their glitter. And so I'm super happy. Thank you all for everything you do. Thank you, leadership team. Thank you, Council President. And let's keep working through the summer.
Thank you. Councilmember Phillips.
Just, I forgot to say, just a reminder, Ninth District, Wasworth Day is back. It's going to be a huge community festival. We got our wine garden, we got tons of stuff for kids. Oh, my gosh. And then we got a lot of adults' activities as well, senior citizen activities. Well, adult citizens, I like to call. And it's going to be from twelve to seven, Saturday, June 29th, the return of Wasworth Day. Come on up. It's going to be exciting. Twelve to seven, Delphonex headlining, DJ Cool, and we also have Suzanne Christine. See y'all soon.
That's what's up, DJ Cool. Let me clear mine through, right? So I'll be real brief before we call for an adjournment. Just for the record, today we passed, just today, just only today, we passed a total of one hundred and seven, combination of one hundred and seven bills and resolutions, fifty-five bills and fifty-two resolutions. So give yourselves a round of applause in terms of... They say what they want to say, but they never can say we're not working, right? And so it's truly an honor and a privilege to have this opportunity to lead this body. And as we continue to work forward and working together, I'm confident we will continually transform and move the city of Philadelphia forward. And so I just want to thank all of you for entrusting me in this leadership position. But most importantly, us working collaboratively together on an agenda to make sure that we're speaking and advocating for those on most in need. I just want to give a honorable mention, just shout out to my leadership team. Because yes, I've only been in this position for six months. And, you know, coming in, it was a transition, a couple of different transitions took place from the inauguration, we had the plan, and all the things I put Wendy through in making sure we got the inauguration correct. And then we unfortunately lost our initial Chief Clerk. And we had to like really keep the ball rolling and all of you being patient with the team. So I want to acknowledge my Chief of Staff, Mr. John Christmas, and his Executive Assistant, Liz Sweeney. Want to thank them for their hard work and their dedication. I want to thank my Chief Operating Officer, who y'all try to get additional everything for your offices from Wendy Prescott Tate. Let's give her a round of applause as well. I thank you, Wendy, for always encouraging me and having my back and just being supportive of me. And my Executive Assistant, Michelle DePietro, just give her a round of applause. You know, this budget process, yeah, we did get a budget done on time, right? And made sure we came back with some strong wins, right, for members. Can't go by here and say they didn't get most of what they asked for. But I had the fine privilege of having a young lady by the name of Helen Lawhead, who's my Chief Financial Officer. And also, and also her deputy, Stefan Johnson, who worked with me as we went through that process, made sure that council priorities were key while we were sitting down negotiating day in and day out at their table. I want to give acknowledgement to John Fitten and the Sergeant Arms teams. That consists of Matthew Little, Leslie Lopez, and Ellis Dickinson. So I thank them. And we thank our communications team led by Mr. Vincent Tomlin. Give him a round of applause. And that consists of Kara Garcia, the flyers y'all seen getting done you may need at all times. Drew Lackman, the videos from Chris Mansfield, and all of your photos that you get in the timely fashion, as well as Megan Washington, to make sure we doing what we supposed to do. Our Chief Ethics Officer, Michael Cook. Let's give him a round of applause. So watch what you post. Mike going to make sure we all all right under my regime. Ms. Breonna Wakefield Esquire, part of the tech team. That's a lawyer. Give her a round of applause with Nick Zanelli. And she's not in here, and this was mentioned earlier. I just want to acknowledge Liz McCollum and the Chief Clerk's team. Give them a round of applause because... Again, this team stepped up and made sure we didn't miss a BF, the unfortunate losing of Michael Dector. And we were kind of like in the world, want to try to figure out how we continue to stir this city of Philadelphia forward in the right direction. And just acknowledge everyone who have also worked together to make sure that we are a strong council body. And we're going to continue to keep building as we move forward. And give a shout out to Nia Carroll, the Court Stenographer. Give her a round of applause for this. We want to be patient with the Court Stenographer. We had like eight-hour hearings, right? And we just, but, you know, I think the longer the hearing, it shows that we're actually doing good work. But listen, everybody enjoy their summer, do some self-care. But I also like to let the media know that just because we off on recess does not mean we're not in our community, still advocating and working on behalf of the constituents here in the city of Philadelphia. So although we're in recess, we will still be engaging our constituents and making sure we're advocating on their behalf. And so with that being said, the Chair recognizes my Majority Leader, Councilwoman Catherine Gilmore-Mitchison, for motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Council President. First, on your behalf, I'd like to invite colleagues, staff, and friends for an end-of-year council social summer kickoff today from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the W Hotel Secret Garden, 1439 Chestnut Street in Philadelphia. And with that, thank you, Mr. President. I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, September 5th, 2024 at 10:00 a.m.
Before I ask for an aye, I just also want to note for a second, just want to acknowledge, I see I'm sitting over there, part of my tech team, Corinne Grooms, and also Brett Niedelka. Just want to acknowledge them on the policy side. Is there a second?
Second.
It adds to moving properties. Second, that council stands adjourned on Thursday, September the 5th, 2024 at 10:00 a.m. All those in favor, the motion is signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries. Thank you very much, and have a great summer.